All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to item A, Presentations and Proclamations for the Community Choice Aggregation Energy. And we have Mr. Seth Baruch, who is the Program Consultant for the County of San Mateo with us tonight to give us an update.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I am going to run through these slides pretty quickly. I think that some of you may have seen this information before. I'll just do some highlights and I'll leave plenty of time for Q and A afterwards. So what is Community Choice Aggregation or System Publicity Community Choice?
It's energy. I'll just say CCA to make it short. Community Choice allows local jurisdictions, county and local governments to aggregate their pool, their businesses, their homes and their municipal customers, electricity customers, under one program which can then go to the market and procure energy and develop local energy resources on behalf of the customers. So if you look at the slide here, I don't know if you guys can see the slide, but...
Yeah, we haven't...
Okay, great, great. I'm looking at it now, I was trying not to stare at it too much. So the Community Choice Program, the CCA, that procures, that program procures electricity or generates electricity that is distributed, delivered over the utility lines, in this case PG&E, straight to the customers. So we have two, or actually I should say three, CCA programs running in California. Marin County and Sonoma County have had, started there, as Marin's been running for a few years. But there are communities up and down the state that are looking at CCA, not just in San Mateo County, but also in Alameda and some places down in the southern part of the state. And the reasons are fairly straightforward, as you see on this list. They, I should say, first and foremost, they offer choice. CCAs provide customers with the option to go with either PG&E for electricity generation or through the Community Choice Program. Right now, you don't have that option. So in addition to choice, and the communities have been very interested in this for climate action, complying with climate action plans, I'll get a little more into that. So there's, you can improve the mix or reduce the carbon intensity of the mix when you improve or increase the amount of renewable energy in your portfolio, which CCAs have to date been able to do. And so far, this isn't a guarantee forever, but so far, the Community Choice Programs have had lower rates, cheaper rates than PG&E. CCAs also provide sort of a laboratory for developing new and innovative programs, whether it's energy storage, energy efficiency, renewable energy deployment, that kind of The main point I went to on this slide is that CCA is an opt-in program. That means if the city of Brisbane and the County of San Mateo, the local leaders decided to join or set up a CCA program, all of the electricity consumers within that jurisdiction are automatically enrolled into the CCA program unless they choose to opt out. And the state law that governs Community Choice provides many, many opportunities for customers to opt out and go back to, oops, sorry, to go back to PG&E. One of the reasons why we say that CCA is the biggest change you'll never notice is because all CCA customers will still receive PG&E energy bill. If you look on this bill, you'll see, it's probably hard for the audience members to see it, but your energy bill is divided into generation and delivery. The generation is what the CCA handles, and that would be a, would just be a new line item, that would be the CCA that would replace the previous PG&E generation charge. Everything else, all the taxes and the fees and the delivery charges are the same. So what you'd get is the same energy bill you got before, which is, I think, one reason why a lot of customers don't even know they've been switched over to the CCA program. Marin, just a quick note here, they actually have a voluntary program where you can opt out to a product that's 100% renewable. So 100% of the demand of the customer can be met through renewable energy. That's a little bit extra money. So PG&E has a certain energy mix, which has a certain carbon intensity, as we measure in terms of amount of greenhouse gases emitted per megawatt hour. Other CCAs like Marin Clean Energy have a lower carbon intensity. So this slide you're looking at comes from the city of San Anselmo, and they've done a study, and we've seen similar studies, including the city of San Mateo, where they have adopted a climate action plan, they have goals to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions, and of all the options that they've analyzed, joining a Community Choice Program is the single largest option, the single largest impact they can make because the energy consumed by homes and businesses represents one of the largest, not the largest, source of carbon emissions within the community. More so, you can see it there in relation to bike paths and public transit, that kind of thing. So with Marin, they started in 2010, they were first out of the gate, they've now expanded to some other areas, including Richmond and unincorporated Napa. Couple of points I just want to highlight here is that they have really focused, as has Sonoma, on developing local renewable resources. So whereas a CCA program kind of starts out and they go and they buy energy on the wholesale market, much like a lot of other, some of the utilities do and other municipal utilities, that kind of thing, they have now entered into a phase where they're building a lot of their own capacity, particularly in solar. They have 170 or so megawatts in the pipeline, that'll be enough to power 85,000 homes. They've already had a fairly significant reduction in carbon emissions, as you can see there, and one of the things that they really tout is the number of jobs that have been created or job hours that have been generated through the construction of these local renewable resources. Here, I just emphasize the pricing here. So Marin and Sonoma, they have sort of this default, in the case of Marin, it's 50% renewable energy content compared to PG&E. Actually, PG&E is a little bit higher now, they're probably at least 24, 25%. And then MCE also has 100% renewable energy product that you can opt into, as I mentioned, and then 100% local solar project, which is a bit more expensive, actually quite a bit more expensive. But as you can see here, the default is a little bit cheaper than PG&E. The 100% product's a little bit more expensive, but they're fairly close together. And that's on the residential side. For commercial, both the residential and, I'm sorry, both the 50% and 100% renewable energy content options are a little bit cheaper than PG&E. Now, that's today, rates go up and down, and we certainly don't guarantee that rates will always be cheaper than PG&E, but so far, to date, and I can go into some of the reasons why the CCAs have been, been able to do a little bit better in pricing than PG&E. Here are just some local projects that Marin is developing in Richmond and in Marin County. Again, as I said, many, many projects in the pipeline that will deliver energy locally. Sonoma Clean Power, they started last year just with their commercial customers, they've now rolled out to their residential customers. They also have 100% renewable option that's sourced from their geothermal facility, the Geysers, that's fortunate for them, they have that resource. And they're also developing a lot of local solar projects, including one that's on the irrigation, floating irrigation docks that's on property owned by the Sonoma County Water Agency. So some kind of cool things that they're working on. They, actually, I think I covered, oh, okay, I'll just mention this slide, that they are also a little bit cheaper, they've saved their customers about $6 million. Customers are paying $6 million less than they would have had they stayed with PG&E rates. You see here, they, again, I guess this is a later snapshot, so PG&E is a little bit higher in terms of the renewable energy content. They're starting at 33% renewable, and they have 100% renewable option that you can opt into. That one's a bit more expensive. The middle option, the default, is a little bit cheaper than PG&E, again, fairly similar to Marin Clean Energy, and again, fairly similar here with the commercial side. Again, the default, a little bit cheaper, the 100% opt-in product, a little bit more expensive. So I've talked about Community Choice Programs as being a higher in renewable energy content, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and being cheaper. So it sort of seems like it's all perfect, but there are some risks, and I would be remiss in not highlighting those. Just because power prices are cheaper today doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be cheaper tomorrow. We have told various city councils and other people that are interested in this topic that we think over the long term, Community Choice Programs will be competitive, maybe a little bit higher, maybe a little bit lower in the future. Overthink the next couple of years, I think it'll be generally cheaper, kind of like the way it is today, but after 2020, if you look into the future, you never really quite know. So if indeed prices do go up or customer opt-outs do increase, that could affect the ability for the CCA to develop new power contracts, to build new projects, that kind of thing. And then there's also a range of regulatory and legislative discussions that are happening in Sacramento, at the Public Utility Commission and in the legislature, that could affect the ability for CCAs to be competitive in the future. I'll just give you one example here. If you go back to this, so you see here the PG&E fee, that's a departing load charge, which is a methodology that is meticulously negotiated at the Public Utility Commission. Without that fee, the CCAs would be a lot more, they'll be significantly cheaper. So there's constant discussion about how that departing load charge is calculated. So again, things like that can ultimately affect the competitiveness of Community Choice Programs. So I'll just leave it at that. You can certainly get into more detail if you want. So in San Mateo County, the Board of Supervisors has allocated money to start a technical study. I'll get into that in a second. All 20 cities are participating in that study. There's been a range of outreach activities, this is one example of that. We are, after the technical study is completed, our draft of it's completed, we'll go back to the Board of Supervisors. If things look good and it seems like the program is feasible, then I assume they would allocate the next phase of funding to really start more detailed public outreach to then start going into the next phase of this program, which would include, as has happened in Marin and Sonoma, the formation of a joint powers agreement. And I should say that the CCA is governed, or CCA Programs have typically been governed by JPA agreements with Board of Directors that are represented by, where member jurisdictions are represented on that board. So in that technical study, I just want to highlight on that, what would be the next phase here, once that study is completed, that study would look at the overall program in terms of how it would be sized, how many megawatt hours of electricity would be required over time, how much megawatt demand would be required to meet peak demand levels. They would look at the ability to be competitive price-wise in the short and medium, long term. The study would look at potentially different scenarios for renewable energy content, the impact on greenhouse gases, jobs created, that kind of thing, and a much more robust risk analysis than I just did. So that's going to be one of the goals, several of the goals of the technical study. Once we know kind of what that study says, then I think the Board of Supervisors will be prepared to make the next step. I think I've covered it pretty well. Nice thing is, the county is covering the cost of that study, so we're not asking for any commitment or any, we're not asking for any of this for the cities right now, we're just kind of keeping you informed, letting you know what's going on, answering any questions you might have. So we'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Lori?
Thank you. So thank you for the presentation. I also attended the presentation that you gave in South San Francisco, and I'm very interested in this issue. So you had talked about exit fees and departing load charges, are those the same thing?
Yeah, I kind of use them interchangeably. There's different kinds of fees, and some people, I think, use them differently. What I was referring to is the same departing load charge.
And is that a one-time charge, or if not, how often does it recur?
It's a monthly charge on your energy bill, on a CCA customer's energy bill, and it's there to compensate the utility, PG&E, for procuring loads. PG&E, they, in the past, they had to procure, they had to plan for delivering energy into the future, and then if you were departing, if you're no longer a PG&E customer, they feel they, and the CPUC has agreed that they should be compensated, so they don't, they're not stuck with stranded assets. So that fee sort of helps compensate them for the fact that they procured load in the past that is no longer needed. And theoretically, I'm not an expert on the methodology itself, but theoretically, it's supposed to go down over time as these PG&E contracts expire and they sign new contracts that don't require, that don't cover the customers that departed. So theoretically, it should go down. It's been pretty level, in fact, sometimes it's gone up a little bit, but that's what that fee refers to.
And does that depend on how many people actually opt out within a county or jurisdiction?
You know, again, the way the PCI is calculated is complicated, and some of the factors that go into it, some of the variables, aren't really publicly available. So I'm hesitant to say, you know, if, I mean, I think basically if the opt-out rate was different, I don't think it would affect the PCI that much, maybe at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Seth, you know, on the Marin, on the 100% renewable that they have, is the price of that, you know, due to, because of the capital costs, did it spread out over a period of time, or how, what's the...
So you're talking about the 100%, why is that a little bit more expensive?
Yeah.
Well, renewable energy is a little bit more expensive. You know, I haven't seen the exact rate structure for how Marin Clean Energy has determined, you know, basically, they calculate the rates based on what they're getting in the wholesale market, what they're building locally, and whatever cushion they need for operational expenses, that kind of thing. And that rate structure is approved by the Board. So I haven't actually looked into, presumably, it's mostly what they're doing is going to the wholesale market and buying from renewable energy facilities, which might be a little bit more expensive, solar, landfill gas, wind, that kind of thing. And so that is all calculated into their, into their rate, how they calculate their rates. It's a little bit of a black box. I mean, I think most of it is open to the public, I mean, the whole rate calculation process is open to the public for the CCA Programs.
So you don't know if it's, the rate is established on the purchase end or on the delivery end? Because it makes a difference, you know, just from line loss of its electricity, right? That you're going to lose an amount. If you're purchasing stuff from Idaho or Montana...
Right.
Or Arizona, if you're paying the price down there and establishing it on what you pay there, by the time it comes to the end of the line...
Right.
You've lost quite a bit.
Right.
You know, so...
I would presume that customers are paying, you know, for the line losses. Now, whether that's on the transmission side of the bill or the generation side of the bill, it's not entirely clear to me.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, ultimately, customers are paying for all the fees associated with getting electricity to your house. It has to be covered by the customers in some way or another.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Ray?
So I'm glad we're moving ahead in San Mateo County. My first question has to do with timeline. If everything goes well, what kind of expectation would we have about when actually we would be...
Right.
Actually using electricity from our own San Mateo County CCA?
So if everything went swimmingly well, we have targeted a launch date sometime, maybe in the third or fourth quarter of next year. So what's going to, what would happen is, you know, let's say the technical study comes back in August or September, and the Board, everyone likes it, then there's quite an extended process for, you know, getting all the cities on board, and then it sort of becomes a political process where it's not really clear how long that would take. Negotiating the joint powers agreement's always tricky, at least it's been tricky so far in Sonoma in particular, where I was very familiar with that process, you know, how is the waiting between big cities and small cities, and there's that whole process. But in terms of submitting the implementation plan, which is a requirement of the PUC, and setting up a timeline for opt-out notices and going to market to procure the electricity you need, that can be done in fairly short order. So we've, you know, tried to be reasonable in terms of what we think the unknowns are with regards to the political process, so that's how we came up with a launch of sometime, let's say, early fourth quarter next year. But it could go, it could slip.
Yeah. Can't be sure, but that's a projection.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the experience of San Mateo County with, you know, City-County Association of Governments, our congestion management agency, you know, they've been through that whole JPA process, and there is a, you know, small city, big city kind of arrangement for the voting process, and so maybe that, maybe just that can be adopted, because that did take a while to negotiate.
Yeah.
So that precedent may actually speed things up, hopefully.
Well, good, yeah, maybe. And these are issues that have been hashed out in Marin and Sonoma, too, where, you know, certain decisions are made based on the size of the load of each city, and other decisions are made in kind of a one-by-one basis, sort of like the Senate and the House of Representatives, the Great Compromise.
The same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. The other, you mentioned various kinds of things happening in Sacramento, and the one that I've heard about is the Erschberg Bill, which is intended to allow big purchasers direct access, so they would not go through a CCA or PG&E or anybody else, they'd go right to whatever source they can find.
Yes.
And of course, that would then reduce the customer load, so that would have a negative effect on, I would assume, both PG&E and CCA. Am I right about that?
Yeah, well, I guess in a way, it's another source of competition. Yeah, so the bill you mentioned has actually recently been amended, so it would not completely lift the cap for direct access, it would simply double the amount, which is still quite a lot. But my guess is that would fill up, and there would still be a waiting list, and there'd still be some limitations in terms of commercial industrial customers being able to sign up for direct access. But yes, it would certainly reduce the, I believe it would reduce the number of business customers that would join a CCA program, so it would have an impact, yeah.
So it's of concern?
Yeah, it is, to me, of less concern than the bill that was in the legislature last year, which would have changed, that was AB 2145, which would have changed CCA from an opt-out to an opt-in program...
Right.
Which would have, pretty much, that was a poison pill.
That would...
And that would kill, and people recognize that, so that, those provisions of that bill were stripped out fairly early on, although it still ended up dying in the Senate. The direct access thing, I think, would limit, you know, the customer size, the ability for CCAs to grow, but I don't think it would have the same impact that, say, 2145 would have had.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I don't know if, sorry, Ray, I don't know if we're catching on your microphone, I'm not hearing it, you know, hold on, if you could raise it up a little bit. Yeah.
You heard me, right?
I heard you.
We can hear it here, but I'm not sure how much our viewers are catching, so...
It's always good to know when we're not properly miked, so it's good to get the feedback. So just so that the public knows, this is not taking PG&E out of, out of our city or as our distributor, our local distributor for power, even if we were to go to a CCA.
That's right.
And the fee that they're getting on top of it from the customer and the billing fees, those are to offset their investment in their transmission lines and their local direct flow into our homes. So the other question that has come up is, is there enough renewables available if we were all to opt in to a renewable program?
Well, that's a good question. I've heard anecdotally that there's a lot of shovel-ready projects out there, that PG&E is on its way to meeting its 33% RPS requirement by 20, I'm sorry, RPS is the renewable portfolio standard, that's the minimum amount. So the utilities have to get to 33% by 2020. So I can tell you anecdotally, I work a lot in Alameda County, and the Department of Defense at Camp Parks in Dublin wanted to put a... Defense at Camp Parks in Dublin wanted to put a solar facility there, but then they wanted to sell the surplus to PG&E, and PG&E told them, this is what they told me, they were not interested because they have all the renewables that they need. So that project isn't getting built. I've heard one of the, one of the reasons why Alameda County, specifically Supervisor Scott Haggerty in the Livermore area, was so interested in CCAs because they were having trouble finding customers for a repowered Altamont wind facility. So I think the projects are out there. The interesting question is, there's been a proposal to raise the RPS to 50% by 2030. That means then the utilities would actually have to go out there and get more energy from renewables. And then, you know, what happens then? Does the price of renewables go up? I've asked a lot of market experts about this, and the answer I get is always the same, and it's, and the answer is, it depends. And a lot of what drives market prices for renewables are the nuances in policy, you know, like what qualifies as an eligible renewable resource, you know, what, what are going to be the rules around renewable energy credits, which I won't get into now. But point is that there's a lot of subtlety there in, in the policy. So if you raise it to 50%, yeah, might it, might not, you know, who, who really knows? But one of the last things I'll say in this point is, we've done some analysis in Alameda and in San Mateo County that just looked at the renewables potential, you know, on rooftops and parking lots and brownfield sites. And the technical potential is there. If everyone's jumping in after 2020 and, you know, everyone's trying to build renewable projects, is that going to give the project developers more leverage to charge higher prices? Yeah, maybe. We'll have to see when we get there.
And, and on the whole, have businesses been amenable to the thought of a CCA and that they think that it could grow their corporate image or their acceptance in the community because they've signed on even though the cost may be incrementally more expensive? Has that been seen in the Sonoma and the Marin projects?
Yeah, I, I would probably refer to those, those CCA programs themselves. But yeah, they've, I know that if you look on their websites, they have, you know, smiling business, small businessmen saying, "I'm a deep green customer." And we've had some conversations in San Mateo County with some of the larger businesses here, just as part of our work with the county, and they're very intrigued. Are they intrigued, anything that gives them flexibility, choice? We've also solicited their feedback in terms of how a CCA customer can be, how the CCA program could be more responsive to business needs. You know, Marin, Sonoma, they're, they're a little bit different. They don't have quite the commercial load that, that a San Mateo or a Alameda County have. So, you know, one of the things that we're doing for the county is really sort of thinking about, okay, well, for some of these large companies, these large business customers in San Mateo County, what types of innovative programs could maybe be developed that a CCA could do that maybe a PG&E, because it's covered such a huge service territory, might not be able to do? And, and so we're continuing those discussions. So yeah, I mean, overall, businesses have been very supportive, very interested, and they're certainly, there are businesses that have opted out and stayed with PG&E, and there are a lot of businesses that are very happy with their direct access, because direct access does tend to be cheaper, the whole mix.
Great, well, thank you. I really look forward to seeing this come through the county level.
And I had one follow-up question. So you talked about the RPS numbers, so when you say every utility is required to meet those numbers, does that include the CCAs?
Yes.
And then, so if a customer chooses to go with a CCA and they go with, you know, renewable energy, who gets the credit, PG&E or the CCA?
So, so the CCAs are considered, like utilities, load-serving entities. They're responsible for serving load to, to the customers within their service territory. So yeah, so they are, they have to comply with the RPS, just like PG&E does. So when, their responsibility is that the, the amount of energy that they either generate or contract for, 33% by 2020, has to be from eligible renewable resources, which is wind, solar, small hydro, and not large hydro. And, and that, that is what gets delivered into the grid on behalf of those customers. So the customers don't really, in terms of who gets credit for it, it's the CCA that, that procures the energy on behalf of the, the customers, and they get the credit. Just like PG&E, they get, they procure the energy, they generate their renewable energy, they get their credit. Is that?
Okay.
Kind of?
Yes. I was just wondering if there was any advantage then to PG&E for customers who choose renewable options, but it sounds like the credit goes to the CCA and.
The credit goes to the load-serving entity that serves those customers.
Okay. Thank you.
And then one other question. What is it that our public can do to learn more about this and to get involved or to help with making this happen? Is there anything at the public level?
Well, I think that's going to start pretty soon. I would probably refer you to the county, the county staff of the Office of Sustainability, since they're kind of managing, but I don't know if you know Kirsten Pringle and Gordon. So I would, Jim Agamire, I would talk to, to those folks. The, but, but in terms of more information, they do actually have a website, so if the public wants to learn more, there's like an FAQ page and, you know, there's, there's different resources there. But particularly as it relates to Earth Day, I know that they're going to be going out there and into the community and starting to talk about this publicly. So they would probably be the best ones to talk to in terms of how the public here can get involved.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Sherry, this, the information for the Office of, San Mateo County Office of Sustainability will be on our website, also for a link for our citizens. Thank you. So that brings us to Item B, which is the proclamation proclaiming the week of April 19th through the 25th as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of Brisbane. And I, I know we have a member of the mosquito abatement group. Would you like to, Bob Maynard? Would you like to?
My name is Bob Maynard, and of course, I live in Brisbane, and I've been on the Board of Trustees of the Mosquito Abatement District for 10 years now. Wow. And it's been fun. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First, this has been the worst outbreak of West Nile virus since the California has gotten the disease. There were about 900 acute cases with symptoms like encephalitis and polio. There were only three deaths, however, because we have a very good medical system. There were a lot, many more subclinical cases in which people just thought they had a bad cold for three or four weeks. The three worst-hit counties were Santa Clara, where they did a lot of spraying and had a lot of citizen complaints, and Orange and Santa Barbara. And we, in San Mateo County, got away with only a minuscule amount of spraying, and that was for Aedes Aegypti, which carries yellow and dengue fever, so it wasn't even West Nile. Anyway, we handled things very well. We're talking with a couple of other governmental entities who are interested in basically hiring us to do their work. And we're trying to decide whether we have the resources to do it. You know, we're a health, basically a, a health agency, and we bit our, inside of our, our cheeks actually, about whether to spend a bunch, a lot of money on a new lab. So the only lab in Northern California that's equivalent is UC Davis, not even the state has the capacity that we do. So we're, we're very happy. So anyway, I interrupted.
Oh, no, no. You're the only person I know who thinks mosquitoes are fun.
I, I wasn't slighting the council in wearing a T-shirt.
Oh. It's the happy of a mosquito.
All right.
With that, I'll make the proclamation that the City Council of the City of Brisbane proclaims the week of April 19th through April 25th, 2015, as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of Brisbane. And West Nile virus is a mosquito-borne disease that in 2014 sickened 798 Californians, 543 of which developed severe neuroinvasive disease, and 29 whom died. This was nearly twice the number of cases that occurred in 2013 and the highest number of cases in California since 2005. And whereas adequately funded mosquito control, disease surveillance, public awareness programs are the best way to prevent outbreaks of West Nile virus, and whereas professional mosquito control based, mosquito control based on scientific research has made great advances in reducing mosquitoes and the diseases they transmit, and whereas the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District works with other public health agencies to reduce pesticide risks to humans, animals, and the environment while protecting human health. And where West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week will increase the public awareness of West Nile virus and of the importance of integrated management in controlling mosquitoes and other vectors in San Mateo County, now therefore be resolved by the City of Brisbane that the work, the week of April 19th through April 25th be designated as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of Brisbane. And I thank you very much for all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Well, and cheering.
Could I add? I just wanted to add, you know, you were talking about the quality of the lab facilities, and I had the opportunity to visit there and observe the lab facilities and listen to the staff, and thanks to Bob.
Yes, and about three weeks, you'll be talking to the head of the, of the district.
Come here?
Here, come here, yes.
Okay.
I, you know, you'd need a better story than I could give you.
Oh, no, you do very well, but I was going to, I hope you agree that encourage my colleagues to take a similar visit. It's quite fascinating.
Yes.
Never seen so many mosquitoes in one place, in the lab, but all the different ways they deal with it, the different ways, the different kinds of mosquitoes, the different, you know, vectors, the control methods, how they try to keep the degree of impact as low as possible. It's really quite interesting. And then they have, you know, divided up by the regions where different kinds of problems depending upon the, you know, the region of the county, and that's, that's also very interesting, so.
You'll have been seeing our trucks drive around Brisbane recently because it's been about two weeks since the rain, and that's about how long it takes for the larva to hatch into full-grown mosquitoes. So that's why they're, they're driving around here and spraying Larvicide. That affects only mosquito larvae. So.
Yeah, okay. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're looking more and more like your dad.
So we're going to do the oral communications, number one. Are there any members of the public who are here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no requests, we will move on to the consent calendar. And I see that there was one, small changes on the council minutes of April 2nd submitted by Lori Lou. And otherwise, we have Item A, the council minutes of April 2nd, and to approve the cosponsorship of downtown Brisbane car show. Do I have a?
Motion to approve Item B. Second.
Oh, you don't want to do A and B?
Well, we have to do them separately, don't we? Because B is on the consent calendar. A, if we're going to change it, we're removing it, right?
Well, I think, can't we leave it on consent with the minor changes?
If you want.
Unless there's other changes. So just for the public's benefit, I'll tell people what the changes are. So this is the minutes of April 2nd, on page seven, under the discussion of the Public Art Ordinance and the creation of an ad hoc committee. I have suggested that we add the comment I made regarding that I mentioned the possibility of having the funds used for a mural on the building behind the skate park, assuming the building owner consents.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, me too. And also, I would, since we got them, looking at them, on page five, under the public hearing on the housing element, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, the city had until the date for completing the zoning amendments, I think that should be 2016, not 15. Right?
So with those two changes, I have a motion.
Motion to approve Items A and B.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we are going to move on to.
So do we do B with that too?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Just want to make sure, because I think, all right, great.
And then we're going to move on to new business, Item A, which is Considered Option of Resolution 2015-10, directing the San Mateo County Chief Elections Officer to conduct the November 3rd, 2015 election for the city of Brisbane wholly by mail pursuant to a public, a pilot program. And we have a report from the county elections.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief presentation on AB 2028, which is the all-male ballot pilot program here for San Mateo County. My name is Mark Church, and I am the Chief Elections Officer and Assessor County Clerk Recorder for San Mateo County. And joining me is Jamie Carrillo, a member of my staff from the Registration and Elections Division. AB 2028, and, and let me start by saying that we are very excited about this pilot program, and, and Brisbane is the first city to consider participating with a formal resolution. And we are planning on doing presentations before every city, city council throughout the county. AB 2028 is an expansion of the Yolo County All-Male Ballot Pilot Project to include San Mateo County. And the purpose of including San Mateo County is to allow for the collection of data from an urban county, so that the legislature will have a more complete picture of the effects of all-male ballot elections. San Mateo County was selected by the state legislature for this project because we are an, an urban and diverse county. We have experience with all-male ballot elections, and there is a, a growing trend towards voting by mail in our county. In terms of how AB 2028 will be implemented, the pilot project applies to local special elections and consolidated municipal, school, and special district elections. So it authorizes San Mateo County to conduct up to three elections entirely by mail until January 1 of 2018. And we are targeting all-male elections for our November 2015 and November 2017 local consolidated elections and one other local special election, which has not yet been determined. So it will not include the presidential election in 2016. So the requirements of AB 2028, there are many. Every voter will get a ballot in the mail, even if the voter has not signed up to vote by mail. In this program, all return envelopes for the ballots will be postage prepaid. In our current vote-by-mail program, we do not pay the postage, so that, that is a difference. And also, although we call this an all-male ballot election, there will be a limited number of. of polling places throughout the county, and the law calls for at least one polling place in each city in the county. So voters can still vote in person at the polls if they want. Like Yolo County, San Mateo County will report back to the state legislature and the Secretary of State on such factors as voter turnout, election costs, and demographic information, and provide a comparison with prior elections run in the traditional format. The potential benefits are significant. We have found that elections conducted strictly by mail can lead to an increase in voter participation and cost savings. In May of 2011, as authorized by our county charter, we conducted a countywide all male ballot special election to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors, including three local school district measures. The turnout in that election was 26%. In contrast, a special countywide standalone traditional election, meaning polling places, was held in April of 97 to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors also. The turnout was 15.6%. So the turnout for the countywide all male election was 10% higher than the traditional election. The cost is also substantially less, about one-third to one-half the cost of a traditional election. For our county and a traditional countywide election, we hire and train some 1,700 poll workers, we deploy and test over 1,400 voting machines, and we secure over 209 polling places, so all these costs will be eliminated under this program. All male ballot elections also reduce the risk of human error that come with employing a large number of poll workers. Problems will be more efficiently handled with a significantly smaller, more experienced and better trained and managed election staff. Whenever you hire some 1,700 people, there are bound to be hiccups, and those issues are going to be eliminated. Most of the election day issues, ranging from technological difficulties with voting machines to poll workers not showing up, are going to be eliminated. Another advantage of the all male ballot elections is faster results on election night. With no precinct ballots, a much greater portion of ballots will be tallied soon after the closing of the polls at 8:00 PM. So who votes by mail now? This chart shows a breakdown of registered voters by age group. The dark green portion represents the number of voters who have signed up to vote by mail permanently, and the shaded area represents all other voters who are the one-time vote by mail voters and polling place voters. And the next slide shows voters by party preference. The chart shows a breakdown of permanent vote by mail voters by party preference. As you can see, there is not much difference between the two major parties. This chart shows a breakdown of permanent vote by mail voters by city. Over the years, the election turnout trends have shifted in the all male ballot direction. About 57% of our voters countywide already prefer to vote by mail, and they've signed up to vote by mail permanently. So more and more people are becoming familiar with voting by mail, and it continues to grow in popularity simply because it is convenient and matches people's busy lifestyles today. So I now want to turn it over to Jamie, who will cover the rest of the PowerPoint. Jamie?
Okay, so just to follow up with one more slide with statistics on it, the last time the city of Brisbane had a candidate election was in November of 2013, and in that election, as you can see, 57% of the voters voted by mail in the city of Brisbane. So although AB 2028 calls for an all mailed ballot election, it is important to know that there are other voting options. So the first being ballot drop-off locations. As with every other election, there will be one drop-off location in each city and town at the city hall, beginning 28 days before the election during normal business hours. What is different under this legislation is that on election day, all drop-off locations will be required to stay open until 8:00 PM, so until the close of voting. Of course, we will still have our two voting centers this election that open 29 days before the election. One is at 40 Tower Road in San Mateo, the other is at 555 County Center in Redwood City. They are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. The Saturday prior to election day will be open 10 to 3, and then election day will be there from 7:00 to 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. As Mr. Church mentioned before, on election day, there will be one polling place in each city, again from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Voters can visit a polling place to get a replacement ballot if needed, or to vote in person. Normally, during a traditional polling place election, each registered voter is assigned a specific polling place based on where they reside. However, under AB 2028, registered voters will be able to visit any polling place within the county to vote. So all polling places will have the ability to issue a ballot to any registered voter in the county. Some of our next steps. We've worked very hard these past few months on creating an outreach plan that will educate really all registered voters about AB 2028, but especially those voters who normally go to the poll on election day, so they are aware of what to expect, you know, why they are receiving things in the mail from us. We strongly believe that outreach is a collaborative effort, and we welcome any thoughts or suggestions that you may have, any groups you think we should reach out to while, during the next few months. I'll breeze through this, but the timeline for calling a candidate election, the deadline is E minus 114, which falls on a Sunday, so it's actually extended to Monday, July 13. So by that date, you will have hopefully passed your resolution for a candidate election. Although under AB 2028, you are required to request an all mailed ballot by E minus 88, 88 days before the election, which is Friday, August 7, we really encourage you to do so as soon as possible, and hopefully as soon as tonight. So to authorize this all mailed ballot election, under AB 2028, you are required to pass a resolution. We did provide the city clerks with a sample resolution drafted by our county council, and I believe you guys have updated it for your city, and if you have any specific questions at the end of the presentation about the resolution, I would be more than happy to answer those. So I'm going to skip to the last point on this page, and it's postmarked plus three. So it's not specific to AB 2028, but I think it is important to note, especially when you're educating your community. So in the past, a ballot needed to be received by 8:00 PM on election night to be counted. However, with the passage of Senate Bill 29 last year, that has changed, and the deadline to receive a vote by mail ballot has been extended. So now, vote by mail ballots must be either physically received by 8:00 PM on election day, or postmarked on election day and received no later than three days after the election, which in this case would be the Friday after election day. Okay, I will turn it over to you guys if you have any questions or comments for Mr. Church, right?
Thank you, Jamie. I just want to conclude with a few brief remarks, and I just want to emphasize that the success of this program will depend on every, the participation of every city, school district, and special district in the county. Everyone will need to participate in order for this program to go forward, and so the governing bodies will need to authorize the participation by resolution, and you have a copy of that resolution before you, and as I said at the outset, we are planning appearances throughout the county. Brisbane is the first county to consider this resolution, so if you pass it tonight, you'll have that distinction and honor of being the first city to participate. But the state legislature will make its decision as to whether to embrace all male ballot elections, as some other states have, in part based on what happens here in San Mateo County. And so this is an opportunity for us to help shape the future course of elections in the state, and I hope that all jurisdictions will take advantage of that opportunity. And again, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council, for allowing us to make this presentation. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Clark?
You said when they have the box located at city hall, you have to stay open until 8:00 PM every day?
Correct. So, correct. So under the legislation, the drop-off location, so which will be at the city hall, will be required to remain open until the close of voting, so until 8:00 PM on election night.
Only on election night?
Only on election night.
Oh, election night only?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I thought for the whole 28 days.
Just one day.
Who's going to pay for that? Okay, all right. Well, I gotta, I gotta be honest, I'm old fashioned. I'm really an old fashioned guy, and I love to show up at the polls, you know? The only time I really voted by mail is because I was going to be out of the country, and I went down to the county center there.
And you'll still have that opportunity.
Would they have the opportunity to vote by mail if the legislature decided, or vote at the polls if the legislature decided to do all mail, period?
Depends on what the legislation looks like. My guess is that they would still allow for some polling places if they decide to go that route.
And how will it function at the polling place? Will it be the standard, standard way of voting, you know, of doing the machine, or would it be you take your ballot and fill it out by hand and stick it in a box?
Voting machines will still be at the polling place that is designated for the town of Brisbane.
Okay, and then you'll collect data as far as if there's like, all of a sudden, a real backup, you know, say in Brisbane, for instance, you know, I mean, 43% of people, I know a lot of people that are like me, they like to go to the poll, and it's just something, you know, it's real Americana about that, you know? You know, that old fashioned part, you know, I really like about it. There's some things I don't like about how our system works, you know, I think, you know, our congresspeople should be voted to four years now instead of two because they spend too much time campaigning in that two-year term, but you know, that's a different thing, you know, that's something, you know, but about showing up at the polls, I really, you know, for myself, I really like that, I really like the American part of doing that, so.
And many people feel the same way. It's sort of a, an indication of, a display of your patriotism, and people, there are a group that enjoy doing that, and they will still have that opportunity to do that. But a number of people have converted to, to voting by mail, and once you try it, you have all that time before...
You'll never go back.
...to ponder your decisions, and so it has increased in popularity, it does match the lifestyle of people today, they're busy, and they're just, people that just don't have the time, and they like to do it in advance.
Sure, I get it, you know, I wouldn't want to be the curmudgeon to stop it, you know, especially out of the gate here if we're the first ones that are in it, but you know, I, you know, just express my feelings about it, that, you know, this is something that, you know, I'm kind of, I don't know, you know? I'm not, you know, like completely, oh, this is great, you know, because I'm not convinced, you know, and that's, you know, anyway, my opinion.
Any comments?
Sure, so I also go to the polls, but I bring my mail-in ballot, so I like it because I can get that experience that you're talking about, but I've already had the time to, you know, sit at home and really research the different candidates and make my decision ahead of time, so I can see the benefits of it.
And I have to say, most elected officials do go to the polls.
Right, you want to have your picture, and if your kids are there, you want to bring them with you and show them what it means to vote, that's what I've done. So my question was, you know, Brisbane, you know, I was surprised to see that the percentage of vote by mail ballots in Brisbane is somewhat low compared to other parts of the county, and I thought maybe that's because we have a small town with a small town center, and it's actually quite easy to get to the poll, and like, it's this sense of, you know, community and patriotism, who knows what goes into it, but could you talk a little about, you know, how there would be cost savings to Brisbane then, given that we only have one polling place and one elections officer?
And I do have the chart, did you bring the chart also? The cost in the last election, my recollection, in the last consolidated election was about $5,000 for the town of Brisbane. Let me check.
I think it says 7,000 in our staff report.
I think our city clerk has it, Mark.
Yeah, it's usually between 5 and 7,000, and I believe the last one may have been closer to 7.
Okay, thank you, and so the, that, we're estimating a savings of, of anywhere from a third to a half, and I have for the, the last 2013 consolidated election, a cost of $5,727, but that varies depending on the election, and obviously it's higher in...
And so what I'm getting at is that I asked this question, and I'm not, I don't know if it was Sherry who answered it, or if Jamie maybe spoke with her today, but that it's calculated, that the vote per, it's per registered voter, the cost, so the county comes up with the total cost of the election and then divides it per registered voter and then allocates it back to the cities?
Yes.
Is that right? So if there's savings elsewhere from this new system, then Brisbane would still be able to realize that based on the total number of voters here. It could be a less, I think it was $3 per voter in the last election.
Yeah, so the costs are passed on to the jurisdictions who reimburse the county, so if there are any, and we're estimating the savings to be a third to a half, and that's what we would, that's what would be passed on.
Okay, and so the elections that would be excluded would be the 2018 election, or 2016, rather?
Yes, the 2016 presidential election is excluded.
Okay.
It only applies to local consolidated elections, and we have one November 2015 and November 2017, and one other local special election, so we have up to three elections that this can apply to, and this is over a three-year period. That's until January 1 of 2018, then this pilot project ends.
And so would the local special election be dependent on city by city?
There'll only be one throughout the county.
One.
And we haven't determined which one.
Okay, okay. And do you have any information on what kind of cost savings were achieved in Yolo County? You said, I think it was 43%?
43% was the cost savings in Yolo County. I don't have the dollar figure, do you have the dollar figure?
What kind of election was that there?
It was a very limited election, it was a, there was a water bond measure, and a, I think it was a school board, school board election for the town of Davis, and so it was not, it was not a countywide.
Okay.
And the whole theory here is that we would, the legislature would have data from an urban county, which would complement the information from rural county to get a bigger, more complete picture.
Okay, and are there any other counties that are moving forward with similar legislation?
There's only one pilot project, and so Yolo County's in it now, and now the legislature has added San Mateo County.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
It's statewide, Yolo County.
And as for you had said, if you have any suggestions, so, you know, as to determining, you know, what kind of outreach you would do, I guess I would suggest looking at, you know, what group in each city is likely to not vote by mail, and then target those groups. And I was surprised to see that the age demographics were pretty, actually, it increased with age, and I was expecting it to... And I was expecting it to be the opposite, that more younger people would be voting by mail.
Yeah, that is interesting. Speaking of the sense of patriotism, you would think the older population may show up at the polls in greater numbers. But I guess the seniors have decided that vote by mail is convenient for them, too.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any comments?
Yeah, well, you know,
Questions?
We always have comments, right? I, I was curious as to why the legislature was so strict in their requirement that every voting jurisdiction has to be a part of it, or it doesn't go ahead? Because it doesn't seem to me that, logistically, that's really necessary.
I'm going to let Jamie handle that.
Yeah, so, so it, it, it really makes things a lot easier for us, as well as the voters. So in, in San Mateo County, there are many overlapping jurisdictions. So there is the city of Brisbane, and there's a school district, and there's several special districts. So if one jurisdiction, so if you were to pass this into an all-male ballot, however your school district decided against it, voters would be needing to vote in two places. And they would get a vote-by-mail ballot to vote for city council, but then they would also need to know that on election day, they had to go to the polls to vote for their school district board members. So, so that, I, I think it confuses voters. So this, it will be one, one method for, for all elections in the county in November.
I mean, obviously, it's, it's better. I mean, I wasn't questioning that. I was just wondering why they were so strict, because one, one little small district can torpedo the whole thing. And that was kind of curious to me, that, that it's so, on such a slender read, that's all.
And so the issue is overlapping jurisdictions?
Right, I get it.
So, yeah, we don't have to conduct two different types of elections.
No, I understand the, the, the reason for it. I was just thinking that, that it's pretty strict and
And, and this is a challenge for us in San Mateo County, because we have a number of different jurisdictions. In all, we have sixty-six jurisdictions, twenty cities, and a number of, of school districts,
Right.
special districts.
Right.
Sixty-six in all.
Right.
Which is more than most other counties in the state.
Right.
With the exception of LA and, and
Right.
a few other, very limited number of counties.
Right.
So it will be a challenge
Right.
to, to get everybody signed on.
And do you know if other counties, like Santa Clara County, have been looking at this, so that in the future, if we were going to do it for, you know, state assembly races, then it, like, it could include candidates that would have, have constituents in both counties?
I know there was a pilot program in Santa Cruz County a while back, a few years ago. And there was legislation a few years ago to have a pilot program in Santa Clara County, but, but that didn't, didn't materialize. And, but I don't know if there's any effort right now. I don't think so, to have Santa Clara as a part of this. I think the, the intent here is just strictly to, to see what happens in San Mateo County, consider that data, and then, and then the legislature would make the decision whether or not they have enough data to make, to move forward, or to, to do another pilot program.
Okay.
It's always an option.
Yeah, just that, for me, two other thoughts. One, something I'm sure you thought about, but there's, for people who wouldn't necessarily vote by mail, I mean, there is a danger that they won't really pay attention, you know, and just throw it away. And I was just thinking, you might be able to reduce that possibility, not necessarily, by putting big red, you know, "Don't throw this away, this is your ballot," kind of thing, you know? Maybe that'll catch their attention. Not necessarily, but worth a try, anyway.
And as I mentioned, you know, our outreach campaign, we hope to have contact with voters several times. You know, I think our goal right now is really for, um, different communications with registered voters. So if you miss the first one, or you forget about it, I mean, we, we have a few more options to get to you before that ballot is sent.
Okay.
Outside of that, you know, we have strong media campaign, radio ads. So we hope that, that people will hear it in one way or another.
Right, yeah, no. And, and the only other thought I had, it, it's kind of an opportunity for some interesting research, too. Because in a way, it really changes the dynamic of the voting process and the campaigning process. Because, you know, the last-minute hit pieces are becoming more and more obsolete, because there isn't any last minute. So it really changes the campaign. Obviously, it changes how many people vote, the figures you gave on that one election. It, it may even change some other things. And so it'd be pretty interesting to, to research all that, to, to see how the dynamics change from moving from one mode of campaigning and voting to another.
Yeah, that's right. That's a very good point. And, and as you know, the method of campaigning has been changing with the vote-by-mail program that we have currently over the years, and, and this will change it even more so.
One last question. So what about residents who may be homeless, you know, who don't have an address, or who just have a P.O. box? How will they receive their mail, vote-by-mail ballot?
So, so all registered voters do provide us with, with an address for them, and a mailing address as well. So that could be a homeless shelter, it could be a friend's home that, that they are staying at. So, so we do, they will receive their mail.
Okay.
And during our outreach efforts, you know, we really will get the word out that there will be a ballot mailed to them.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to comment. I, my husband and I have both been vote-by-mail people, permanent vote-by-mail ballot, and we have different styles. I like to fill mine out right away, and, and mail it in and be done with it. And he likes to deliver it in person down on election day to the ballot. He likes getting the sticker, and, and he likes feeling like he put it in the hands of someone who may care. And so for us, as a community, we're not going to be losing any polling places. Larger communities will have more issues with that, because they have more than one polling place. They're going to be reduced, and I think that there'll be more of a challenge to get the word out in those communities, and to keep those voters engaged with the process if they have to go out of their usual in, area of comfort to, to go vote. The one really nice thing, especially in a presidential election by a vote-by-mail, is the earlier you do it, the quicker you stop getting campaign materials. And anyone who's running a well-run campaign knows when that ballot has been received. And you stop getting all the, and I won't say it's junk mail, because it's, it's, you know, something that is important to inform voters, but that does stop. And that's a really good thing. It's environmentally friendly, and, and it's a very good thing to have happen. It, it wouldn't really affect in a local election, but in a, in a national campaign, where people are paying attention to who they're mailing to, and, and really know their demographics, it's, it makes a big difference. And as much as we all would like to turn off the television when we see the campaign ads on something we've all made up our minds on, you know, you can't turn those off. But you can turn them off when you vote by mail. And to me, that's a really big bonus that I see by doing this, and by going to a vote-by-mail system in the future, and, and seeing how this works out for the county. So with that, do we have any other discussion among ourselves? Or do I?
No, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-10, directing San Mateo County a chief elections officer to conduct the November 3, 2015 election for the city of Brisbane.
Second.
Okay, and a second
Second, Pat.
from Lori? And then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're number one.
All right.
Number one.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. And we will be sure to note this on our webpage. Brisbane has been the first city in the county to lead the way. So thank you very much.
Well, good luck with the pilot program.
Thank you.
If, if I could, just a little bit from, from a historical context. Mark's a former mayor of Millbrae.
Right.
And his father, Marvin, is also the chief elections officer in San Mateo County for many years. How many years?
That's right, for many years.
Many years.
He hired Warren Stokoe.
Yeah.
He hired Warren.
Yeah.
Runs the family.
Warren's now on the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, on the board.
Yeah, all right.
Great, thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, so then we'll go back to our public hearing, Item A, which is to consider adoption of Resolution 2015-11, authorizing the issuance and sale of water revenue bonds and finance improvements, to finance improvements to the city of Brisbane's municipal water enterprise, and approving related documents and official actions. And can we get a staff report, please?
Sure. Yes. And it's going to be the same staff report for Resolution BGVIMIDFA 2015-01. So I won't repeat myself when you get to that one.
Okay. Appreciate it.
In the, during the 2013, 2014 budget process, the city council approved $5 million worth of CIPs for the water and wastewater systems. The four projects that were approved was the Bay Shore Boulevard eight-inch fourth main underground relocation, the Glen Park pump station upgrade, pressure-reducing valve construction, and fire main on Anis line, and Anis pressure-reducing valve, as well as a supervisory control and data acquisition system replacement. On April 24th, 2014, the city council reviewed the, the subcommittee's recommendation concerning rate increases. We did the 218 process. And on November 20th, 2014, the city adopted the rate increase. The rate increase was to pay for the annual payments for the bond. It is anticipated that the bond payments will be $350,000 a year. What you have before you are all of the implementing documents and the resolutions to go ahead and sell those bonds. To note, there is an aspect of, there's one as part of the bond documents that says that the maximum rate that we can receive before we decide not to, before we legally have to not sell the bonds is 12%. That is actually at the discretion of the city council. The reason the bond council uses 12% is because that's the legal maximum limit. So what they're trying to do is give the city as much flexibility as possible in the sale of the bonds. The bonds are also limited to be no more than $5.6 million in total, or $400,000 a year. If you do the math, it actually will come out to less than 12%. What you can do, if you would like to, is lower that number. I would recommend something in the 6% range. It's still higher than what we will receive, but it will give us a little bit more of that flexibility if we get a higher interest rate. Then we would try and figure out whether or not it's worth selling the bonds. We anticipate, as we said before, getting the bonds sold in the 3% to 4% range, and we anticipate that the annual cost will be $350,000. That's what we set our rate to recover. If we receive interest rates for some strange reason on that day, that would be much above the $350,000. What we would probably do is recommend to the city council that we not sell at that point in time, but go back to the city council and talk about how we should finance it differently, or in, in addition to. So I would make, I would recommend that you make that one cha, you direct us to make that change to the doc, to the documents where it's necessary to have our maximum rate be 6%. And also, I was informed that we still have a holdover from an old bond document that has us having the redevelopment agency. And in fact, that should be the GVMID, you know, Brisbane GVMID Financing Authority. And we would make that, we would recommend you direct us to make that change as well. And of, of course, on all the resolutions, we will include, you know, the mayor's, for the mayor's signature, as well as, as to form by the city attorney. All of the documents were prepared by the city's bond council, which is an attorney that you hire, but we will include that on this. And I have informed the bond council that on our future documents that he sends us, that he needs to include those on them. If you have any questions?
Questions for staff?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
I have one little, very minor little thing, and then I have a question, just something I think would be useful to explain. One of the things I noticed at the end, when it talks about how do you contact the various signers of all these documents, it has the phone number and, well, physical snail mail address, and phone number and fax. But there is no email address. And I'm just wondering, is there a legal reason for that? Or
No.
You're just doing it the old way, or what?
Just the old way. We'll include that.
Yeah, okay.
Because, believe me, I do receive emails
Okay.
from people who are curious.
Okay. Then the, the part of it that's kind of interesting, that I would appreciate just your, our explaining for anyone who's interested, because it is a key part of this bond arrangement, is what is called the installment sale agreement. And the mechanics of that are pretty interesting, and I would request that you give a short synopsis of that.
I have not looked at this for a couple of weeks. So the installment sale agreement, and I'm going to make sure I'm actually talking about So the, the way that we sell bonds is, this is a revenue-backed bond by the utility fund. The way that we do it is we actually have the financing authority sell the bonds to the public. The city, the utility fund, then pays the payment to the bond financing authority, our financing authority. And that then makes the payment to the, they then use that money to pay the, the bondholders. The reason that we do that is we're able to call it a lease agreement. And this, I, and I'm trying to remember if this one is actually a, a lease revenue bond, or if it's a straight revenue bond. But normally, what we would do is with the, when we do a lease revenue bond, is that the, we would have the city lease the prop, lease, have the financing authority own the property, the city would lease the property from the financing authority, make the lease payment to the financing authority, and then the financing authority would then use that money to make the bond payments. And that's just a mechanism that we can do it in such a way that it allows us to be able to make a determination on an annual basis to make those payments. Gives us a little bit more protection, that if we get into a problem on how it defaults, it defaults against the, a financing authority doesn't default against the city. However, what I would tell you is that if the financing authority defaults on a bond payment, it would be very hard for the city, anytime in the near future, to sell another bond. It would be similar to a person who declares bankruptcy trying to go out and get another credit card. So it's, it's the arrangement that we have, that has been determined in most municipalities as to how to make these bond payments happen. And it is a fascinating process, and the person who came up with the, with the idea was much smarter than I am.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Sure. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I had my, my questions and quibbles answered.
Okay. Then with that, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up to public comment. And I have no slips from the public to speak, but are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no hands, I make, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-11, and the GVMIDFA Resolution 2015-01?
So moved.
Got a second. We can do them together, Mr. City Attorney? Or do you need to do them separately?
You can do them together.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. And any, do I have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
I'd just like to make a comment, if we have any viewers watching, which I'm sure that we, we do, that to go online and actually read the information on it if you haven't already, but there's a lot of great historical information and statistics of current stuff, if you're into that, that, a lot of good information about Brisbane and about the County of San Mateo, so I found, you know, it's real interesting to read again, so.
Okay, so that moves us to new business, item B, which is to consider adoption of a proposed general fund balance policy. And could we get the staff report, please?
Yes. So with the 2014 budget, the City Council directed the Budget and Finance Subcommittee to review the city's fund balance policies, as well as looking at unfunded liabilities. We've talked briefly in the past about the unfunded liabilities. What you have before you tonight is the fund balance policy. Previously, the City Council had a fund balance policy which required the city to maintain about fifty, or maintain 50% of its expenditure, general fund expenditures in a reserve. There was no real definition as to what an expenditure was. There's a lot of different ways that you can define expenditures. Are they the ongoing operating expenditures, would you need to have reserves for the one-time expenditures? And the challenge for that is, of course, that if it's a one-time expenditure, it's not gonna be something that's gonna be ongoing, so do you really need a reserve for that? Also, when you have transfers out, or is that really, is that an expenditure of the general fund, or is it an expenditure of a different fund where the transfer is going? So there's a lot of technical issues from a finance perspective on how you would read and interpret that policy. During the recession, the City Council voted to reduce that requirement to five, to five, a minimum of $5 million, and then when the recession was over, went back to the 50% of reserves. For the 2013-2014 budget, and I looked at all expenditures, including transfers, so the highest possible number, we had $13.9 million in our budget, we, which would have required us to have reserves of $6.950,000, and we ended that year with reserves of about $12.1 million. But what the policy doesn't talk to is what that, what the reserve is for, and it doesn't say how that reserve would be used, or when it would be used, or if it ever would be used. So talking with the Subcommittee, staff made a recommendation that we really look at the reserve from three different perspectives. The first perspective is, how much money do we need if we were to have a disaster or a, an instant emergency going on in the city? The discussion was looking at that being about $3.5 million. What that would do would be able to cover for overtime that we were experiencing during that, that emergency, that one month or two months during the recovery period, that it would take us to recover, as well as looking at what it might cost us for rental of equipment or purchasing additional supplies to fix the areas that we need to in the city. Also, remember that as part of all of this, a lot, you know, and probably a portion of those kinds of repairs would be coming from the utility fund, and that this doesn't cover, this does not necessarily cover that portion. It could, if the City Council chooses, but does not necessarily cover that. The utility fund has a fund balance, a reserve policy that they need at least 20% of their operating expenditures in reserve. So you have money in the utility fund to cover some of the utility fund costs. The second issue that we would use reserves for would be if there was a recession. We went through this recently. The recession that we just went through impacted our revenues for about four years. And what I did is I looked over that four-year period and said, if we were to have received a normal rate of increase in our four major revenue sources, property tax, business license, hotel tax, or transient occupancy tax, and sales tax, what would we have received in each of those four years, and what did we lose in each of those, what percentage of that revenue did we receive in each of those four years? I then went back and said, okay, going forward from the fiscal year 2015-2016 with our projections, if we were to hit a recession starting in 2016-2017, and that lasted four years, how much would we be down in revenues in each of those four areas? And what I determined, it would be down at about $2.5 million. So the recommendation from that perspective is that we would have $2.5 million in reserve that we would only use if there was a recession. And that, we would use it over a four-year period of time to balance out our revenues, and what that would allow the City Council to do is to make decisions on how to reduce expenditures in such a way that has the least impact on the lives of our residents and our citizens. We did a lot, we did that, we used our reserves for that purpose last time, but we did not have any specific dollar amount spelled out as to what we could do, so there was, we did it by attrition, and we did it through reductions in having staff, you know, really be careful of what we spent, and I think we're seeing some of the results of that in the current budgets that we're facing. There is, there was pent-up issues that we weren't taking care of. You'll get to the, one of the big ones on the next, on the next item when we talk about the vehicle replacement fund. But we also, you know, we've had, some of our unfunded liabilities have grown during the last recession, and so this $2.5 million could be used to cover some of those kinds of costs during a recession. The third aspect of a reserve could be for the annual fluctuations in a budget. We go through this every year, where, you know, I'm making my best guess, and working with staff, and working with the City Council Subcommittee and the City Council, at this point in time, trying to predict what's going to be happening, what are the needs of the city throughout the 2015-2016. So we're trying to estimate our costs anywhere from 14 to 18 months ahead of when we actually make those expenditures. You know, I am not, if I was able to predict exactly what's gonna happen 18 months from now, I would actually not be sitting here, and I would be making a lot of money in Vegas and predicting sporting events, which is not what I do. So I want, so what I recommended to the Subcommittee, that we would estimate, have in reserve 5% of the projected revenues and 5% of the projected expenditures. So if our revenues are 5% on an annual basis below what was projected, or expenditures were up to 5% higher than projected, we would have a specific reserve for that. We're, I'm estimating next year's budget to be about $15 million. I'm projecting that we, you know, I'm hoping we'll be somewhere in balance, that revenues and expenditures will be close to each other, and if that is the case, the 5% on either side actually is 10% of the overall number, so that would be $1.5 million. So if you add up the three different reserves of $3.5 million, $2.5 million, and $1.5 million, we have a reserve of approximately $7.5 million that we would want to have for next year's budget. The money that, as I said previously, we had about $12.1 million in reserves at the end of 2013-2014, and I think, if I remember the number correctly, we're projecting about $11 million at the end of 2014-2015, which I presented at the mid-year budget process. So we will have more than what we have in reserves, and then the question is going to be, what would the City Council want to do with that reserve? One, of course, is just to keep it in case of other issues that come up, or we can use it for long-term liabilities, issues that we have. You know, and I think what it starts to do is start looking at the budget process not on a year-by-year basis, but really looking at, you know, how do we create financial stability over time? And that we don't look at one-time incidents as being a dire issue that we need to deal with, worry about, and create havoc for the community because it was just a one-time issue. I mean, I think, you know, as we dealt with, with the recession, we looked at it and said, you know, this is a longer-term process, problem that we're facing, let's figure out how we're going to reduce our expenditures to deal with the longer-term problem, and I think that is what the purpose of the reserves are for, and that's what this policy will help you do. I drafted a policy, but I will tell you that we have a much better policy that was written by one of the committee members, and I think it's a clear definition of each of the, what each of the different areas are for, and how each of them would be used. So I would recommend that you would adopt the policy that you're being handed out at this point in time. The policy itself doesn't change the substance of what I have said, it just provides a better way of saying it. And that is my report.
Have a question.
For staff or for me?
For staff.
For staff, go ahead.
Since, I take it that you and Ray are the committee that are proposing this, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I, I really, I commend you guys, I like the idea, you know, actually, Brisbane's really been on a cutting edge for many years in establishing a reserve, you know, that, I know I've talked to many of our colleagues in the county for years, and they go, you guys have a reserve? I mean, like, you know, like, a policy for that? And they go, yeah. And that's really helped in our recessions, that we started this back in the 90s, and I still believe that, I don't believe that a lot of our colleagues in, you know, a lot of the other cities have this, you know, and maybe they don't have the means to have it, but, you know. Clay, I know you indicated for years that you and Stuart worked, worked in Reno, that your reserve was $1 million, and that was a huge city. It's like, you know, talk about operating, you know, a close line there. So I really like it, you know, the refinement of it, the kind of defined things, you know, even more, and, you know, we have a real luxury here in Brisbane to be able to at least do that. And, you know, that makes, makes me feel real good, you know, as a councilperson, that, you know, we have good, sound direction with, you know, our policies and stuff, and this helps refine it. Given that, though, I did, I did wanna have one question on, you know, how you were talking about during the recession that, I mean, the criteria that you used, that our transit occupancy tax through the hotels went up, and, you know, one of the things we had to take into account, and you didn't really say it in your staff report, is that we had the election where we increased our TOT, I think, 2%.
Right.
Correct.
And I did take that into account, actually.
You did?
Right, so what I did is, prior to the recession, we were at 10%, we were at 8%, and we went, we were at 10%, and then we went to 12?
Yeah.
And what I did is I backed, I divided it by that 12% to figure out what we were getting on a percentage basis.
Right.
And I looked at it from that perspective.
Okay, yeah, you didn't say it in your staff report.
Correct.
I was thinking, well, you know, I don't know.
No, it did not include that as part of it. It was, it was very surprising to me that we were actually able to maintain our hotel revenues through that period of time.
And our hotels have actually been, or
They've been booming.
... of revamping and everything like that, so upgrading, and they're really nice. I actually had the opportunity of taking a tour of the rooms of one of them, so.
I mean, we are, probably, we're going to be receiving this year somewhere between $2.4 and $2.5 million. I think just two or three years ago, we were hoping to get to, we were hoping to get to $2 million.
Right, right.
So it kind of tells you just how much the Homewood Suites and the DoubleTree have been able to increase their business. I think there's a synergy of both of them being Hilton properties.
Yeah, yeah. Very good, though, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of this, and commend the Subcommittee on your work on doing this.
Thank you, but we especially need to thank Stuart, of course.
Yes.
Yeah. Of course, it goes without saying. Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
So when it comes to what the council wants to do with the excess, or, you know, once we hit the reserve that we want to be at, I just want to point out that in all this lovely paperwork that we got on the sales of the bonds, we really need to keep in mind that our OPEB costs are spelled out very graphically in the sale of the bonds.
Right.
And that our liability is going up, and our contributions are not coming anywhere near to what our liabilities are.
Right.
And we're only paying about 29% to 35% of our actual costs for our retirement benefits. So that is something that, in my opinion, it would be a very good thing to, once we get to our reserve policy and have, if we have excess, that, that should, certainly should be something that we look at directing any excess funds to go to, because it's, it's a tremendous liability, and it's about $4 million right now. And, and we're contributing a little bit towards that, and we've made a policy to try to continue that in this upcoming budget cycle, but I think that it's something that we really don't know what those future costs are going to be. We know they're gonna go up, and our actual contribution rate may not go up at that same rate, so I think it's something that we really need to look at and keep in mind, because it's not that we have all this extra money. It all could be spent right now if we didn't have it all put out there on those credit cards that is contained here in these documents from that.
I mean, and, you know, let me echo that, and we also, you know, there's other issues concerning capital project, you know, capital project catch-up. You know, what you have on your next item is the vehicle replacement fund, where we're gonna need to put some reserves towards in order to catch up what we should have been putting, setting aside for vehicles, but we also, you know, one of the items that is in the budget this year and that we're working towards is figuring out what we need to deal with with our buildings, as another catch-up item. So there's, not only do, you know, not only do we have OPEB, there are other areas that I think as a city we need to be looking to catch up. And one of the issues that we probably should talk about at some point in the future is as, if we, as we've had in the last three years, have revenues above expenditures, how should we be using that for one-time purposes? Is it catching up on our liabilities? Is it setting up, setting aside money for some of the capital projects that need to happen in town? And how do we start funding our capital projects list? The last time I think we actually did a full 20-year CIP was probably about eight years ago, prior to the recession. That is one of the tasks that Clay, you know, has us working on that we can bring back to you with the, you know, the 20-year CIP in the 16-17 budget, because we need to know what we need for the buildings, and that's going to be another area that we will probably be coming to you and saying, you know, how do we look towards beginning to fund those kinds of issues as well? So I fully agree, I fully agree with you, Mayor, that, you know, this is, just because there is money sitting in the bank account, does not mean that it, there aren't other issues that we have. It would be as if, as a person, that you have money sitting in your bank account when your child is six years old, and you're, you don't want to spend it, because when your child turns 18 and college costs $50,000 to $60,000 a year, you don't want to be borrowing against that.
Or leaving it in your checking account when you've got credit cards unpaid.
Absolutely.
And OPEB and, and the other things are the looming credit card.
Right.
So.
Oh, I was just gonna piggyback on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Same, same issue. Not only do we have lots of unfunded liabilities, which we know about, but we haven't really set all those out comprehensively, and we're in the process of doing that, and I know the city manager has requested that that all be investigated, and we can get some real data on this, and it's substantial, so we don't just have all this loose money floating around that it doesn't have any claim on it, there are lots of claims on it, much more than we have in reserves, actually. So that's the first point. But the second point is that not all the reserves are accessible cash. They're receivables, but some of them are not all that easy to get access to, and some of it we may never get, such as, you know, the loan that we made back and forth between the Marine and the city through the redevelopment agency, and, you know, that's one of those loans that we may or may not ever get paid back on, and yet that's, you know, it's there in the, in the reserves in the totals, so that's, that's another factor that we have to make sure that people understand that, just because there's a number that's greater than the reserve policy requires, that doesn't mean that it's, it's that doesn't mean that it's, it's loose floating around and we can spend it.
It's all liquid, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we realize that, so.
Exactly.
But it's good for the public to know that.
Exactly. Okay, sorry.
Okay. So in terms of the process going forward, then, would this be something, the issue of what to do with, you know, how to allocate or put it, put into use the money in the reserves for specific uses? Would that be discussed at the budget subcommittee letter, level, or be presented to the council during the budget discussions?
It would be both.
Okay.
I mean, we would not be spending money out of reserves except when approved by the city council. My auditorium is very upset with me.
I think it would go through the subcommittee first and make a recommendation of full council, just like this.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. And one other question I had, I had asked staff by email if you could explain how you came up with the $3.5 million estimate for what is needed in case of a natural disaster or emergency?
Having, having not had a natural disaster in the recent past, which is since the life of the city, really, because even the last big, even the last earthquake in Northern California was not that bad for us. What I looked at was if we were to spend, if we were to require double shifts for the, for employees for a month, our annual cost for salaries in the city is about $7 million, so therefore we spend about $600,000 in salaries. So if we were to require time and a half for everybody, if we were to require double shifts for everybody to work through the recovery, which would be police, fire, public works, you know, that would be about $900,000 in cost to us. We don't have very much roll-ups in those, because that's, you know, just, we have roll-ups in the base salary for PERS and for health insurance that's already covered in the base salary. So that was, so I looked at that and said, you know, that would be about $900,000, it'd be somewhat less than that, because we have a number of people who are salary employees who don't get paid overtime. Then I looked, thought about it, and said, you know, about how much money to try and deal with some of the instantaneous supplies and services. You know, when there's an emergency, we would need to do some rental of additional equipment. We might need to bring in some contractors. You know, some of that we would be needing to pay out in cash immediately, some of it we would be able to fund over time. And then the other side of it was looking at if we were to lose some money from a natural disaster for sales tax or property tax. If you have a number of buildings lost due to a disaster, the property tax gets relieved until they get rebuilt. We would have some reduction in some areas in sales tax, although I would say that Golden State Lumber would do very well during recovery, as would Norman Wright Mechanical. They both would be, they, neither of those two would be hurting during a recovery period, because that's what they, that's what they would sell. So I'm not quite sure the impact on, on that would be. Depending on what goes on at the Marina, I'm not quite sure what the impact on the hotels would be, because if the hotels are still standing or, and are able to house people, they would probably be completely full. So I was trying to, try and figure out all those and say, what is a reasonable amount of money that we would need? If we, as we're going through the recovery, we, of course, would be collecting, you know, the information as to what it cost us, what it cost us in overtime, what, what we spent on other areas like new supplies or contract, and we would ask FEMA to reimburse us. So part of it, you know, I would tell you that, you know, the FEMA process could take a number of years to recover from. I looked at Randy, five to 10 is probably a reasonable period of time to think is when we would get our reimbursement. So I just wanted to make sure we had enough cash for that. If it's a bigger disaster than that, you know, you still have at least $2.5 million as if there was a recession, and you would still, you know, and above that, if it was even worse, you'd have that million and a half for that one-year problem. Plus, you would have approximately $600 to $1 million sitting out in the utility fund based on their 20%. So, you know, if there was, you know, if it was that big of a disaster that we lost or had to recover, you know, $8 to $10 million, we have that ability. And that's kind of how I thought the three and a half, as just that base number, was probably worthwhile, because the problem, the concern is, is if you create a reserve that is too high, you run into the problems that the mayor talks about, is then how do you fund some of your long-term issues, your long-term unfunded liability? So I was trying to make a balance between those two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is a public hearing?
Actually, it's not.
Oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry.
No?
It's just new business.
Yeah, you're right, they
I'm prepared to make a motion if you want.
Okay, well, I would like to offer, if there's any members of the public who'd like to comment on this issue, and I see no hands, so we have
Okay, then I would move approval of the general fund reserve policy?
As amended?
Amended.
As amended, yeah.
Second?
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Which moves us on to directing staff to establish a vehicle replacement fund. We'll set aside funding for, to replace the city's vehicle fleet.
Yes, so one of the unfunded liabilities that we have is the replacement of our vehicles. Normally, the way that we've replaced vehicles in the past has been when a vehicle is needed to be replaced, we have come to the city council as part of the budget or as a supplemental appropriation, and it impacts the budget in that single year. So when you just purchased the new fire engine, it was a $60,000 cost to, to the city's budget in that year. If we were to replace a frontline engine, it could be, you know, $400,000 to $500,000. When the city's vector goes, I think those are about $250,000 pieces of equipment. So what they do is spike your budget during the year. And we don't, you know, again, we don't use them all up in that one year. So a better, more prudent method would be to set money aside every year to replace your vehicles, so that way, when the time comes to replace your vehicles, you have the money available. Our vehicle fleet consists of about 50 vehicles. It includes the sedans that, you know, for public works, it includes a van for parks and recreation, includes the police cars, it includes everything, including the Marina boat that we just purchased. The value, the cost to replace this, our fleet, is about $2.2 million. So the way I came up with that is I looked at what the cost of the item was at the purchase time. I then said, if we were to assume a 3% inflation on the cost of replace of vehicles over a period of time, what would it cost us when that, the useful life of that vehicle was expected to be gone? So for a police car, most police cars run through their useful life in three to five years. So if we're going to replace police cars every, you know, four years, if you say that I'm going to set aside what I paid today for that vehicle four years from now, you're going to be behind, especially with what interest rates are right now. So what I did is I went through it and worked with the subcommittee again, and said, what was it going to cost us to replace the vehicles when they needed to be replaced? And I've come up, I came up with the analysis, and, you know, the vehicles assigned to the general fund up, up until today. So what we should have set aside today for our vehicles in the general fund should be $879,000. So when we talk, you know, when the mayor talks about some of our unfunded liabilities, this is one of those unfunded liabilities that we don't show anywhere. And we also need to allocate $114,000 every year to keep up with that. So that way, when the vehicles are used up, we can replace them. What you'll see in next year's, in the '15-'16 budget, is a line, you know, is a recommendation from staff that we transfer $114,000 for that year to a vehicle replacement fund. The utility fund should have set aside about $535,000 to date, and it needs to allocate about $40,000 going forward. And the Marina has a lot less, it's $78,000, and it needs to allocate about $16,000 to replace the vehicles that are covered in the Marina. So what staff is recommending that we do is that we create what is called a motor vehicle or a vehicle replacement fund. That way, when vehicles are spent, are bought, they are bought from the vehicle replacement fund. The money is set aside in the vehicle replacement fund. You would see a budget within that fund for new vehicles going forward. In this staff report, what we are recommending is that the city council directs staff to use $879,000 of the general fund's current reserves to be placed in the vehicle replacement fund, to use $535,000 of the utility fund's reserves into the vehicle replacement fund, and to use $40,000 or $78,000 of the Marina reserves into the vehicle replacement fund. And that way, that fund is, that would now then be fully funded for what we owed up until that point, up until today. So that would take care of one of our unfunded liabilities completely. And that's the recommendation. And as we've spoken about previously, there is enough money and reserves available in each of those funds to cover that cost. And then we would, in the '15-'16 budget, start budgeting the vehicles so that we would have annual, we'd be able to stay caught up in annual replacement.
And, and just because we have funded the vehicle replacement fund doesn't mean that, you know, every three years, they're going to buy another police car or, or do the replacement. It would still be budgetary discretion, so if there were a hardship or a severe recession, we could decide to not fund the, the vehicle fund, you know, as an emergency basis. It wouldn't lock us into that. But it would just show that that's a designated allocation for future use.
Correct. And also, what we would do is we would look at the condition of the vehicles before we even brought them to you to be replaced. You know, just because on average, a car lasts, you know, seven years or 10 years, you know, my car is now 13 years old, and I'm sure everybody else has cars like that. Some last longer, some last shorter. So, you know, and we would bring individual vehicles to you when we needed to have them replaced. So, yes.
Thank you.
So with these amount being taken out from the reserves, would this still allow the, the reserve policy that we, we just adopted to, would that, would that affect it, or would it still allow for sufficient amounts in the reserves for the three categories that we previously discussed?
Yes. So the anticipated ending fund balance for the general fund, based off of what I did at the mid-year, was about $11.3 million. So reducing it by the approximately $900,000 that this would do for the general fund, we would still have about $10.4 million available. So that's still in excess of the $7.5 million. And if, as you remember, when I was talking about the mid-year budget, there was still, I was still estimating low on some of those revenue sources. You know, as I said, I estimated transient occupancy tax at $2.3 million. I am very confident at this point, because I'm already up into March numbers, that we're going to receive somewhere between $2.4 and $2.5 million in that. So we'll have, we will be in excess of this, of the $11.3, and therefore, we'd be in excess of $10.4. So we will still have probably at least $3 million above and beyond what we had in the policy you just adopted.
Thank you.
And as for the utility fund, we would still, it would be right around $2 million. The utility fund has expenditures of around $5 million a year. Your policy is to have 20% in reserve, so you would still be about $1 million above where you would need to be for that.
Yeah, I certainly like the idea of sinking funds, I, you know, especially for stuff we know it's going to need to be replaced in the future. I did have a question in regards to Marina. Maybe Randy, you can answer this. How many vehicles do we have out there? I know we have, like, electric vehicle and the boat and
We've got two electric vehicles right now. We have a Gem Electric, we've got a golf cart, we've got a pickup, and then we've got the boat.
And the boat. And since we just purchased the boat, is this amount really what, what you needed here? I mean, I guess, you know, it seemed like, boy, that's a lot for just purchasing a boat. What's the lifetime on that?
Well, so it's, so what we gave to Stuart as staff people, and I was probably the, the repeat offender on that, I think I've got most of the vehicles. We gave him the current year of the vehicle, and with the help from Betsy, we figured out what the vehicle had been purchased for, when it wasn't something brand-new like the boat. We estimated a useful life, life for it. And so by knowing when you purchased it, knowing what the cost, he was able to project out when it was going to be, need to be replaced. And so that's how he came up with these numbers.
Okay. This doesn't include the standalone generator out there, does it? I mean, it's not considered a vehicle, but
Standalone, it does not include a standalone generator, does it?
Is that, is that something that should be included?
Right. I mean, I would think that would be part of the facilities that we would be looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just rolling stock.
Yeah, because we're going to go and look at that, you know, for buildings and stuff, too.
Right.
This is a program that we're doing, and so this is the first leg of it. No, I certainly support this. I think it's a great idea, it's a predictable way of doing business, you know, that gives everybody a picture that, okay, well, here, here's where we are, here's where we're going, this is what we got. And, you know, like I said earlier, you know, Brisbane, compared to a lot of jurisdictions, you know, we do have a luxury, you know, being able to do stuff like this. So I'm certainly in favor of it.
Yeah, just a couple of points from me.
Of course.
Of course, we saw the whole spreadsheet that they're, Stuart was just talking about with all the vehicles and how old they are and so forth. So that was kind of interesting, too. The, the point that I think should be emphasized, Stuart, that you haven't emphasized, though it's in the staff report, and that is the proposal that we use a replacement cost approach rather than the traditional depreciation approach. You want to just mention that? I think that is kind of important as far as the policy is concerned.
Sure. So normally, when accountants account for items, they, they do it from a tax basis, because most accounting is based off of for-profit, and your goal is to reduce your taxes. So what they, so what they do is, they say, how much of the current item have we used this year to produce our goods, our cost of goods sold? So if you were to buy a, I'm going to make this hopefully easy on myself, a $40,000 piece of equipment that has a 10-year life, and you do straight-line depreciation, which is the easiest depreciation, which is not what most people use, but let's assume that they do that, you would say that you're going to set aside $4,000, you're going to depreciate it $4,000 every year. That $4,000 is a phantom expenditure. So what that does is it puts $4,000 into your bottom line in your reserves. So at the end of 10 years, you now have $40,000 saved up to buy this piece of equipment. However, if inflation over that same 10-year period has been 3% a year, you're going to be ending up with a cost of at least $52,000, and that's not compounded, so probably $55,000 to $56,000 compounded. So what you've set aside is $40,000 for a $56,000 expenditure. That doesn't work. So what I did is I said, okay, in 10 years, this piece of equipment, which is going to cost us $56,000, what do we need to set aside each year to get to that $56,000 at the time that we're going to buy it? And that's a more prudent and financially stable way to do it.
Right, good. And I've just, one other comment that's not directly related to this policy, but one could find it a correlation if one looked at the Energy Policy Committee, Energy Policy Report that I think the Open Space and Ecology Committee is working on. And one of the things we might want to look at is the type of vehicles that we purchase over time, that we make them more energy efficient, more friendly to the atmosphere, meaning lower carbon footprints. And so I think that probably the appropriate place to put that is in, you know, our energy efficiency policy for the city. But it made me think about it when we're talking about replacing vehicles, you know, over time. I think one of the things we want to do is to, you know, to reduce the carbon intensity of those vehicles, and that, I don't think it belongs in this policy, but it could go into the energy policy that Open Space and Ecology is putting together.
Sure, if you'd like to. We'd love some public participation. We'd love some public participation.
Barbara Ebel, 349 San Bruno Avenue, and a member of Open Space and Ecology Subcommittee on the Environmental Action Plan. This is in fact something we've looked at. For most communities, electric police vehicles make absolutely no sense because they're so large geographically. But we were actually trying to do a little groundwork on whether or not it might make sense for our police department to have a limited number of vehicles. Because we didn't want, we weren't even thinking about converting the whole, suggesting to convert the whole fleet, because there is, these, those cars have to be in service a lot, and there is a time delay with charging an electric vehicle. But we were thinking maybe the ci, the city might want to invest in one and see how it works. So we are definitely thinking along those lines, and I wanted to go ahead and say that at this meeting, because it might affect Stuart's budget in some regard. So, yes, we do feel that that might be a direction that would be beneficial for the city to go in the long run. As part of reducing our overall carbon footprint, one of the things is that the police vehicles must idle in order to keep their electronic equipment functioning. And potentially with a vehicle, an electric vehicle, you would not have that problem. I personally feel that that sets a contradictory message to our population when police vehicles are idling and we're asking our residents not to idle and actually enforcing no idling rules. So electric vehicle, not in, not only in the terms of reducing carbon footprint, may also reduce emissions and idling. So I thought maybe that was a possibility with our small geography here.
Thank you, Barbara.
That, and that, of course, would require some research, because that will require battery power and, you know, not like...
Oh, yeah. No, it's just something, that's why it's not appropriate in this context.
Yeah.
It just made me think that, since we're going to be developing this long-term policy of replacement, that one of the components, and we might get some thought to, and obviously for some vehicles, it makes a lot more sense than for others. And maybe for some public works vehicles, it, you know, makes more sense than for police vehicles, and, but that needs to be investigated.
Needs to be vetted out, yeah. Because I know we do have some electric vehicles already.
Yeah.
Right.
At least one, right, for public work, Randy? A little one that we run around?
Yeah, what are the electric vehicles that you were referring to? You had said there were two out...
There is one, I know that. I see it.
The battery-operated ones.
Yeah.
They're the battery-operated ones that are out of the Marina.
Yeah.
They're the little Gem-style. I don't know if you're familiar with that manufacturer. They're about half the size of Councilmember Miller's Mitsubishi. They're quite small. They're, they're very convenient when you're doing meter reading through town, and you're going to make a lot of stops and starts, though.
That's a NAV, isn't it? NAV, Neighborhood Short-Range Electric Vehicle, I think.
It's, it wasn't designed under that standard. It's, it was a smaller utility vehicle, and Gem is the name of the manufacturer.
They use them out at the Marina quite a bit, and so...
We also mentioned, you know, looking with, trying to do some preliminary thought, thoughts around biodiesel, and I even said, you know, if the police department wants to borrow my car, they can, just to go up and down the hills a few times, see if it's even remotely satisfactory.
Doesn't give you that sound of power.
Actually, that kind of sounds like the Batmobile.
Well, I would...
Make a motion?
Make a motion to consider staff to establish a vehicle replacement fund.
Thank you.
Per the staff report?
Per staff report.
Right. Because there are a couple of components, the, the policy of how to calculate it, and also the amount that we have to take out of the general fund to get it up to speed and so forth.
So is that a second?
That's a second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item D, and that is to give staff direction on concept sketch for Brisbane entryway project. And staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor, council members, good evening. So this is an item that was budgeted in the 2014, 15 budget. It was regarding the entryway at the northeast corner of Bayshore Boulevard, and where Old County and Tunnel Road come together there. We had a fifteen thousand dollar budget. So far, we've expended two thousand dollars of it. We did have a landscape, I don't want to use the word architect, it's a landscape design firm, to come in and develop a concept sketch, went through a couple of iterations with them. Once we got a couple that seemed satisfactory, at least as a basis, we engaged the Economic Development Subcommittee, brought it to them, went out and did a field walk. The ED Committee had some comments on it. We went back to the landscape designer and asked him to incorporate those comments and those changes, and that's what you see in the sketch before you. So what staff's looking for tonight is some direction. Does the council as a whole feel like this is going in the right direction? Do you have thoughts? One of the, to me, one of the key things that's in there is that it's been proposed that we have a welcoming monument of some sort that lets people know, hey, you're here in Brisbane, welcome to Brisbane. And I'd, I'd love to hear the council's ideas on how we would develop that. The cost that I've shown in here doesn't include that, and I think certainly with the community of artists we have, that, that you would want to have some sort of selection process, that we would want to give our folks first shot at it. But I'd really be interested in hearing what you think the parameters of that would be so that we could go back and develop something for you. So if you, I'm looking for your comments tonight to see if there's a sense that this is something we want to develop further, and recognizing the cost, is this something you want me to put into the CIP budget, request to you for 15, 16? And to help me understand, is there, is there some sort of basis, some parameters around which you'd like to develop? I, I guess I'll call it a competition, if nothing else, for entryway monument.
Thank you. Laurie, I think you were on the spearheaded this, so do you want to go ahead?
Sure. So, so the Subcommittee has considered this, and yes, this was, I guess, an idea that, that I had come up with to, you know, to really create an entrance to town so that people driving up and down Bayshore know they're here, they're in Brisbane, and to put a use to that city-owned property, which is currently unused. So the idea was proposed to, to include some garden plots, since there's always growing demand for spots at the community garden, that we could have some additional plots here. And we could also have native plant garden where San Bruno Mountain Watch and other groups could hold demonstrations, and it could be a, a meeting point. It's also in walking distance to the Mission Blue Nursery. And then if you look at the, the sketch, the, I guess, planting area on the, I guess it's the southern portion of it, is, is, that's the area, there's two portions of it adjacent to the sidewalk, where, where I'd like to see a monument sign that says, "Welcome to Brisbane," in a form that, that fits, you know, the style of our community. And then also, some sort of iconic public art that would go through a, a public vetting process could also be placed on that area. And the parking was something that was put in in the second stage of the sketches. It was not something I had thought about, because I originally thought people would park at the parking lot across, across the way, but it was put in more of a, as a cost savings measure, because then that area wouldn't need to be landscaped. So I'm excited about this project, and I'm, I'm open to hearing the rest of the council's input. Unfortunately, Cliff isn't here, but I know that he was also supportive of these sketches.
Clark?
Well, just having one view of it, you know, I, I, I think it certainly would be an upgrade to the area. I know we got a letter from Dana Dilworth.
And I have a slip from Barbara Ebel, who would like to speak on it when we get to that point.
I like the idea of a competition for a monument, you know? I just had a question about the creek beds. Is that used for water runoff, or how, how's that going to function?
Yes, sir. So that would be part of our compliance part with NIPD, so we can take rainwater off of Bayshore Boulevard.
It would.
And, and so there's actually already an existing drainage. You see, I, I, I'm not sure if you're completely oriented, but the way that drawing is north is to the left. So Councilmember Lou got it pointed on, when she said the monument area is, is at the south end. So there already is a drainage ditch along that sidewalk running from south to north. So what we're trying to do is get it through those dry creek beds and continue to get it there.
So then that would have a pitch towards the lagoon and...
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, that, that's the only way they're going to work. We're going to have to do it by gravity flow.
Yeah, okay. All right. Other than that, I'm, I'm just, you know, encourage you to press forward as far as, you know, I'd like to hear what other people have to say. I'm not, you know, highly opinionated of it. I think it's a great idea to do something.
Well, I have a, a number of thoughts. Some of them are, are personal, and, and some are, are a process. You know, the, the idea of, of, you know, upgrading that area, you know, that kind of makes sense. But whether to do it, and I'll, I'll go through this particular things that, that I'm thinking about, but the, the, the one thing that, that Dana said in her message, and I kind of agree with, that, that I think it's, it's really a project for the next budget, particularly at this level, which is, you know, fairly expensive. And it really should go through, particularly, as, and, you know, it's a park, so it certainly should go to, go through the Park and Recreation Commission, it would seem to me, to get their input and their comments and suggestions, because it really is kind of in there really weak, and I really think we should do that. I don't know about Open Space and Ecology. I'll, I'll let Barbara talk about that when she gets a chance. But I know that Paul Bousgal has been talking about doing something with that creek area through there for quite some time. And I remember various occasions in which he'd suggested that we, you know, enhance this as a, an area of, of a natural preservation. So how this addresses that, I'm not really sure, and, and maybe that kind of issue should go through the Open Space and Ecology Committee. The, just personal things, I'm not really sure that the community garden should be over here. I'm a little bit worried about safety, because it is kind of on the other side of Bayshore, and there is that kind of a concern about traffic and et cetera at that location. Whether this is the best location, I kind of like the idea of some kind of, you know, public art to, to say, okay, this is Brisbane, I kind of like that. But whether this is the place to put it, I'd like to give some more thought to that, and I'd like some other groups to give some more thought to it. You know, it's been, there've been various recommendations in, in the past for other locations, and whether this is the best location, I'm not sure. But I think we should think about it a while before we, you know, commit to it.
Is that, is that considered a community garden? Is that, is that...
Well, that's part of what's proposed here, yeah. That's what I heard, anyway. That's...
Yes, sir. That is what's proposed, that there would be, there would be both a native plant area, and there would be community garden area.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right. So both are in the plan now, anyway. Yeah, I don't know about the whole parking thing, whether that's good or bad. I'm not so sure about that either. So the idea of upgrading this area seems fine, the idea, you know, the native plants and, and making it look nicer, I mean, I like, I like all that. But those other things, I, I just not sure about. And from my point of view, I'd like to, you know, to run it through the appropriate advisory committees and, and get their input, because, you know, once we do this, it's, it's probably going to be around for a while. So I kind of like to make sure we, we're comfortable with how we do it. So that's kind of my reaction.
I'm, I'm sorry. If I may, there, there's only two areas in Mr. Miller's comments that I could comment on and provide some suggestion. I think, number one, certainly, the idea of sending it through the appropriate committees is absolutely fine. One of the things we're going to have to do, because of the dollar amount we're reaching, as I mentioned in the staff reports, we're going to have to get a design consultant, a, a professional design consultant, someone who's licensed, so that we can put true bid documents together, true plan specifications, so we can bid it, and absolutely no problem at all with routing it through, if you want to go through Park and Rec and someone else, that's fine. That, that's easy for us to do. The second piece, it's hard to tell from this drawing, is I, I know the creek you're talking about, the Guadalupe Creek that Paul has talked about, and we've had conversations with him over the years. But what doesn't show on here is that this area here only gets about halfway there. It really only gets to the base of the abutment. So that, that's the reason for a couple of things. It's number one, why we're not including the creek and extending in there. And it also explains why the parking is where it is, because otherwise, to make a place to park, assuming the park and ride is, is frequently utilized, you'd have to come in that M and E access road and then carve more land out just for parking there. So it just seemed to make more sense to put the parking right adjacent to where this was. Is it optimal? No. Is it functional and workable? Yeah, for the, for the life of this park, and the life of this park, until you can extend it to the north, to the creek, which I think is a fabulous idea. It's one of the things we've, we've talked about for a long time. I think that would be a nice, pleasant seating area. But we're just not there yet. If you, you start to look at this, even this budget that this architect had, had come up with, or this designer had come up with, I mean, it's, it's bare bones. You start talking about four dollars a square foot. I, 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 I don't know that we could have delivered it at, at that price, quite frankly. So that's why they start to get expensive, and that's why I'm making the remark, because to get to the creek, you would have twice as much area again. And so now, you're starting to look at two hundred, two fifty for a park. And I know we've got lots of priorities, but it's, it's certainly, we look to the council to give us guidance, policy directions on where you want that sort of money being spent. Thank you.
So to add on to that, this goes up to the, like you said, the abutment. So right where the, the bridge starts, and there's, I guess, a barrier there, so it's, out of that whole area between Tunnel Ave and, you know, where the bridge comes down and the fire station, this is probably like at most a third of that. So it's, it, it looks big here, but if you look at like an aerial map, it's, it's quite a limited area.
Yeah, I know.
And it is far from the creek, as you mentioned. I'm, yeah. Go ahead.
Barbara, you've been waiting patiently. Can we, would you like to come up and, and give your comments on this?
So if, if you so choose to have Open Space and Ecology look at it, I'm, I'm sure we'd be happy to. I've kind of tried to get this space rolling in Open Space and Ecology before, and it just seemed like the committee had more will to do other things at that particular time. Um, excuse me. So I, I didn't have a lot of time to put together a lot of research, but I've, I've done tons of reading over the last couple of weeks about water issues. And, and like I said, I didn't have, I, I have the information at home. I didn't have time to put all together the resources for all the council. But one of the things I really want to push for personally, and through open space as much as I can, is edible spaces. Now, maybe this is the best place, maybe it's not. I'm not, I don't have an inventory of all the land the city owns on the top of my head. But I've been reading a lot about how farm, fifty percent of the produce sometimes doesn't even make it off a farm, because there's problems with it, you know? Manufacturers only want carrots that fit in their carrot peeling machines. Sometimes the price of broccoli will drop such that it's not even economically feasible for them to go out and harvest the broccoli, so it just rots on the field. And that means that fifty percent of the water that is used in agriculture, the numbers on different sources are between thirty and fifty percent. So thirty per fifty percent of that, eighty percent of our water is, just goes to waste. And I think the only way we're going to deal with our water problems in the state of California is by decentralizing our food system. And so it's very, I think, personally important to me in, in looking at sustainability, that we provide garden space... we provide garden space for those who want it. Certainly not everybody wants to come out and become a backyard farmer, but if we have demand that we're not meeting at the community garden, then I feel it's absolutely important that we expand to meet that need. My personal feedback in terms of this design is that I would want to see a lot of, I didn't see a lot of trees. Maybe I was not correctly reading the legend. But I would think you would want to put a lot of trees in that space, because it is pavement locked on three sides, and you're going to get a real strong heat island effect there unless you put some trees. And I think unless you cool it with some trees, you're going to have a lot of water to maintain the other plants. And I think that trees would really cool down that spot and make it much more, and that's an opinion. I can't quantify it for you, I'm afraid. I wish I could. I wish I was that smart. But I just, I wanted to say that now, so that as this, if I don't get another chance to drop, jump in, as this process goes forward, that's considered. I brought a little snippet from Seattle's Food Forest, which I think is a model, they seem to put it together pretty cheaply, at least what I was looking at online. Again, sometimes you read these articles and they don't really explain the full context of where all the money is coming from. But they seem to have put it together pretty well with some grants, and relatively it's a little city money. And I think if we could do that, not necessarily in this space, but maybe this space could be an element of that in this community, I think that that would put us right out there at the front of sustainability, which is, you know, certainly what I hope for Brisbane. And I know a lot of other people want to keep this place beautiful and livable for as long as possible. Did I say everything I wanted to say? I'm not sure. But I got started, and I thank you for your time. And I'm sure I'll think of something else later, but I'll try to put together those resources and any other thoughts I have, and send them to Sherry. And I look forward to hearing from the council. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. And to respond to your point about the trees, we did talk about trees at the subcommittee level. And what we were hoping for was to make sure that the views were not impacted, because there's pretty good views there, looking towards San Bruno Mountain and town. So, but I agree, some greenery is definitely a good idea, and hopefully that is incorporated in there. But I think that's a very good comment.
Well, there's lots of different kinds of trees. There are sometimes tall trees with an upper story canopy, so that they get above where your view is, might be an option.
Okay.
I would have to go stand out there and look at it before I can really give, and maybe I could give better feedback, but that's just off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's also one of the reasons we hire landscape architect, you know, kind of help with that.
So we do have, thank you very much. So we also had a letter from Dana Dilworth that commented on the public process for the entryway project. And she wanted to reiterate her experience over the bus shelter in the community park, that we're a town of artists, and that there doesn't seem to be innovation in this and not a public process, and that she feels that it should go through, and I'm paraphrasing, that it should go through the Open Space and Ecology Park and Rec and have more opportunity to use it as a bioswale. So she has some environmental concerns. And I looked at this and spent a lot of time last night looking at this rendering, and I know that it is, the area has been somewhat of an eyesore. And we have done some work on making it look better recently, where we've put down the bark dust, we've done some plantings. But looking at this, I was just amazed that when we have a native nursery, and we are so cognizant of what invasives do and what versus native species, that most, all of this is Australian. It is not even, the tree is, that they've planned, they've planned in this design is a cross-pollinating mesquite that would, could cross-pollinate and have problems with our local mesquite. It's certainly overplanted for the design, because looking at the species, some of them are allowed eight plants in an eight-foot area, and the plants are supposed to be six to eight foot wide each. So looking at the design, it's very not what I would think is good ecologically. There's a lot of different water needs. Some are high water, some are low water. And so I don't think that was really thought out in this plan. And I know that when we had members of the public here about our Park and Ride lot, that a lot of the shrubbery over there, they felt was sort of a difficult thing to manage, because we had people pulling in and using the area for nefarious purposes, just because they had a little bit of shrubbery, much less place to pull over and have other things going on. I don't think that the area with three pieces of roadway around it is going to be a peaceful park or a good place to really grow gardens. But I do think that if it could be really well done, for probably a lot less money, and certainly a lot less water intensive, to do it with native plants and to make it a, if we really want to showcase what Brisbane is capable of doing, that it would look really nice as a native demonstration garden. I think that we've done it out at the yacht club, where we planted, you know, one end of our area there with all natives. And you wouldn't know that it wasn't a fabulously landscape architecturally designed area, because that's what it is. And so I think that while doing something nice there would be great, and having an entryway to Brisbane, I think that this is overly conceived for the area and for the water needs, and that we'd be better off doing it with a lower impact, less destination. I don't think that right there, under the freeway and by the main arterial is a good park destination, personally, for me. So I would think that it should go back through our committees and look at it and decide on a budget during the Budget Committee and address it that way, for myself.
Can I follow up with that? So Randy, did we look at all about the water needs of this design and whether, you know, the needs of these types of plants and what, you know, how?
Drought-resistant plants.
Right.
We're really not at that level of design, ma'am.
Okay.
You know, certainly, the intent was going to be to have plants that can survive in this microclimate with only setup water.
With only what?
Setup water, so initial setup. So typically, it takes you a year or so to get your planting established, and then, you know, you leave your drip system in place, but you're no longer watering them. Certainly, in a time of drought, it wouldn't be the time to put in something really, you know, why don't we just put in ornamental turf, right? And that's not very smart. Clearly not what we're doing. And I recognize that what this was, an attempt to try and get something on paper, to try and generate a conversation, so we can get a sense of what I want. You know, call it, it's not a straw man argument, but it's something at least to throw darts at, to tear up a little bit, and say, okay, yeah, that we really like, yeah, that, not so much, this, let's change, and get a sense of, do we have a project that we can sort of bring back to you and say, yeah, we're all kind of going in this direction, but it needs to go through these different hoops, and then it needs to be massaged here and massaged there. And that's all fine, that's part of the process. And that's part of the challenge of designing something like this. It's not, it's not a water pump station, it's not a question of taking X amount of water to a certain elevation. This very much is beauty. It's in the eye of the beholders, and there's more than just the four or five beholders up on the daisies, community beholders, that are going to be looking at it every day, and they ought to get the opportunity input on it. And I think they bring up some great points.
Right.
Yeah, across the board.
And to address the safety issues, I was wondering if lighting might alleviate that, or, you know, a policy that the park is only open during daylight hours? How do we deal with that with other parks in town, like Firth Park, for example?
There aren't any restrictions on the hours of use.
Okay. And have we had any issues with security and safety at parks in town?
I would have deferred to the chief, but she's not here, ma'am.
Okay.
She got a phone call.
That's never good when the chief's gone that long, sir.
Looks like an emergency. I guess, does that give you enough direction?
You know, actually, sir, I do. I mean, I feel like I've got a sense of direction. I feel like really what I'm going to do is come back and put this as a recommendation, not a recommendation, but a request for the 1516 CIP, and to pre-establish a budget, and understand now that if this gets funded, as you go through and look at all your other priorities, that when I bring it back to you, and I've got a request for proposals, that the landscape architect's going to have a couple of different things he's going to consider. And we're going to want to have a higher emphasis on native plants, we're going to want to, you know, certainly consider how we're going to develop it. And I like the idea of edible spaces, but that's, again, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, because that's the engineer giving you a personal opinion instead of an engineering opinion. I try and keep those separated when I can. But we'll just take the input that we've got and roll it, and roll through it, and see if we can't come up with something that looks good for us.
Yeah, I had, I had just one other thought that got generated by the conversation, and that is the whole issue of whether or not we have enough community garden spaces. And I don't know whether there's a backlog of demand. You know, if there is, then maybe that's something we should, you know, take a look at, because you were talking about, you know, other lands that the city has access to. And there are some other potential places, whether that's appropriate or not, have to be investigated. But maybe that's something that, I don't know, would be, has Park and Rec traditionally done that, or is it open space? Who does the looking at the community garden?
We do it out of the city manager's office.
Is that right? No, you're talking about the allocation, right?
Right.
So is there a waitlist?
Additional space for more, for more plots.
Well, we haven't explored that. I mean, obviously, if we were to do that, we would look at some sort of process, but in terms of the management of it, we do it out of my office.
Yeah, I was thinking about, if we have a much greater demand than we have current plots.
I wouldn't say much greater, but we do have a waiting list.
Uh huh. Then I would think, you know, whether this is the, you know, the best location or not is something to be investigated. And, you know, I could think of a couple other locations in town that, you know, the city has access to, and we may or may not want to put community gardens there. And of course, we're thinking about it in the Baylands project as well, so. Anyway, that's just something else that came to mind that we might want to investigate, and if we discover there's another place that's better for community garden plots than here, then we could do something else here, you know?
Sure.
That kind of thing.
Sure. And Terry, I think you had mentioned that you had thought there may be other locations that should be considered for a sign for Welcome to Brisbane. What locations did you have in mind?
Certainly, with the way that the city entrance is right now, where Bank of America has their sign, is really the Welcome to Brisbane sign, it's the turn at the B of A. But we don't have access to that property at this time. So as far as I know, that's not city-owned. The little lot where the Lions Club set up, that is city-owned.
Right.
And that is what you see when you're coming over Tunnel into Brisbane, or you're coming from San Francisco down Bayshore. That's where you would see a sign if it were there. How that could be incorporated to be visible from, coming from South San Francisco, coming northbound, would be very difficult. And I think that any one corner would be difficult to get it visible from all directions. So I think it's something that really would need to be looked at and thought about what, if any, other things are going to happen on that corner. I know that, you know, with the redesign of, or the potential redesign at the Brisbane Village, and that whole thing that's coming up in the planning process, along with the housing element, planning process, that things could change tremendously on what the eventual use is, or what the conceived, the concept is. So I think it all needs to be looked at.
Okay. And our thinking for this proposal was that the sign would then be visible as you're driving over Tunnel Ave, you know, across Bayshore, and then it would also be visible driving north into, you know, through, along Bayshore. So it would be visible from at least two locations. But I agree, you know, you can't get it from every angle.
If you're heading north on Bayshore, when you see the Welcome to Brisbane sign, you just passed us, when it's on that corner, if you're going north.
Right. Well, if you're heading south and it's in the Lion Street lot, you're also past us, so.
Yeah.
Agreed that the B of A lot would probably be the most ideal, but it has ownership issues.
Unless you do all four corners.
Yeah.
We're not Vegas.
That way.
So.
So I think we're done with this one, and it's 10:15. Do we think we should take a break now, before we move on to the Marina dredging? Or do we think we can?
I think we can go through it.
You want to power through it?
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that...
We're going to approve you a warning contract for the 201516 Brisbane Marina and Entrance Channel dredging project to the Dutra Group for 3.653500 million dollars.
So a brief staff report?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be happy to give you an additional one. So we've been talking about this project for two years now.
Right.
You've seen the plans and specs, you've seen the bathymetric surveys. You've heard testimony from all sorts of boaters, people near, far, wide, the Sierra Point Yacht Club. It needs to be done. These are the bids we got. We weren't particularly thrilled that we only got two bidders, but dredging is a little bit of a closely held secret, because sometimes there are limitations in resources that are available, particularly in the barges and the scows, that are used to take the dredge material out to wherever the disposal point is. And so that's, as we were starting to fish around with the dredgers, we think that's what happened. We think that there just wasn't the right availability of scows in the right location. So these are the two bidders that were available. One apparently thought that he had the only scows available, and the other dredger thought likewise. So that's why we got the bid we did. And you see that really, as you go through some of the conversation about the bid that Anchor put together for us, the bid was in, was within about 15% of the engineer's estimate. So that's a fairly reasonable bid, even though we only received one that it was that low end. So they're recommending we award it, and staff is also recommending we award it.
And if we do this, the dredgers available to get started, right, along with our timeline that we've got set up?
Yes, ma'am. If you take this action this evening, they'll be available for June 1.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, we've been through this a couple times before, pretty straightforward.
So I had a question. I had asked staff to clarify, and I think it might be helpful, just to help everyone understand what the equipment idle day rate means and what that is covering.
Sure. So the equipment idle day rate is, after we had brought the project to you, the plans and specs, we issued an addendum, and that was one of the items we included in it. Because as we started to have discussions with dredgers, it occurred to us that there was a very short timeline within the amount of things each dredger had to do as he finished a dredge area, and then tell us, okay, well, I'm ready to go to the next dredge area, so you need to get those boats out of the way. And we had only given ourselves a day to do that, to clear, you know, a couple of piers. And so what we wanted to ascertain in a competitive process was, what's it going to cost us if it takes us two days instead of one day? Because my experience in project and construction management is, discover that before you've got the bidder out there and it's a change order, and he comes up with some number that you go, well, how can that be? And then you're arguing about why it's so high. So we put it in there. We don't think that it's going to take us an extra day as we move to each one of the dredge areas, but if we do, the contractor's going to have all his idle equipment just at Anchor, and he's not going to be able to employ his people. So that's what those costs... So that's what those costs are.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's, it's a maybe we use it, maybe we don't.
It's, we certainly plan to not use it, but if we have to, we know what the cost is.
How much it'll cost you.
Thank you. Good question. So.
Just waiting for a second.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
Have a second? And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's, June 1st? June 1st?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you. And with that, we will go to consider appointment of a representative and an alternate to the Community Choice Aggregation Energy Advisory Committee. Staff report, please.
I think the staff report's self-explaining, so it's up to you to appoint, uh, one member as your, um, member and then one alternative member.
So who wants to do it?
So you feel that we need to have this as council members and not a member of the public?
No, I, I think you should not have a staff member. However you want to do it.
I mean, I'm sorry, staff, council member.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the letter asks for, uh, council members or, uh, staff.
And I disagree.
And, uh, that's what the letter says.
Yes.
Uh, but the, but the recommendation is for, uh, two council members, a representative and an alternate. And I guess my question was, would the, would, would the mayor be interested in doing that? Doesn't sound like it.
And you know, Cliff isn't here. I don't know if he has an interest. I am interested. I, I just have issues with the time of the meetings because they're Thursday evenings, which is, yeah, in San Mateo.
Actually, I think Cliff is interested.
So maybe we can defer this to our next meeting. I know they're, they're having their first meeting. The advisory committee on May 28th, so that still leaves us time until the next meeting to make a decision. So I, I'd like.
But they ask for their names by April 24th.
When is our next council meeting?
It's not the end of the world if we come in later.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have our full council here tonight and if Cliff has expressed an interest, I think it'd be important for him to be.
Did he, did he express an interest in doing this?
Well, I haven't heard, but I think.
Um, he hasn't specifically.
It's on Thursday evenings and, and that's also, but they're not going to be doing it.
On the fourth Thursday.
I'm sorry?
The fourth Thursday of every month, so it's alternating with our, it's not conflicting with our council meetings.
Okay. And that's also on the airport land use.
Oh, the airport roundtable?
No, airport land use.
So maybe Cliff.
Uh, is on Thursday, fourth, fourth.
And is that one that Cliff?
It just makes it, all of them are busy for Thursdays with us, um, because we have our council meetings on Thursdays. So it.
It's a different Thursday, though.
Yes, no, I understand that, but most of the, a lot of other subcommittees and CCAG and they do them on Thursdays because traditionally councils don't sit on Thursdays.
Let me, let me make it easy. Um, Lori, if you want to be the main, I'll, I'll do the alternate, alternate unless Cliff really wants to do it, then, uh, you know.
Okay. I am going to have to figure out logistics, though, so, but I, I'm interested. I just need to do some confirming and perhaps childcare arrangements.
Okay.
Okay, well, I.
So as long as you'd be willing, Clark, to, to be available, then I'd be more comfortable since there would be an alternate.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, do we want to make that decision then?
Yeah.
It's fine.
I don't think you need a motion for it. No, I don't think so.
So it would be myself and then Clark as the alternate?
So then we have staff reports?
None.
Okay. And then, uh.
Oh, one thing. Uh, may I? Would you be so kind as to sort of announce the NOP for recology, just for the record?
Uh, sure. The, um, the notice of preparation for the recology project application is on our website, was issued, I believe, on Monday and there will be a meeting here at City Hall on April 30th at 7:30. That will be a, a city, um, conducted meeting. Uh, we will have our consultant, um, that will be, um, conducting the meeting for us. I think the mayor will be kicking it off and that's to get input on the, uh, subject matters that will be, um, reviewed in this EIR. If you have looked at the NOP, you, you will note that, um, I believe 18 of 19 subject matters that are, um, studied under SEQA are already contemplated to be studied in the, um, in the EIR. So it's going to be a fairly comprehensive, um, document.
And so that meeting's April 30th at 7:30?
Yes, and I believe that's a Thursday.
Another Thursday.
Right, but before May 28th, so. And that's something that council members are encouraged to attend or?
Um, I wouldn't say encouraged.
Allowed. Allowed and it'll be publicly noticed.
I mean, it's not something that the council would participate in per se, but you are certainly allowed to come.
And will it be televised?
Um, yeah, that's why we're going to have it in this.
Here, okay.
Thank you.
I can give one quickly.
Okay.
Um, just to give you an update, um, the Baylands Subcommittee has met a couple of Several of the meetings have been getting feedback from various stakeholders on the sustainability plan, or sustainability framework, we're calling it now, uh, including, uh, the representatives from Universal PowerCon, so they, they get their chance to have their say. And it's also been distributed to all our advisory committees and groups, uh, and we're hoping to get feedback from all of them eventually as well. And we want to, we have a, a plan to get this, uh, done, uh, before the end of fiscal year. And so that means it has to come through.
Ambitious.
Yeah, right. In June.
Okay.
So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that. Uh, so that's one thing. And the other thing that the Baylands Subcommittee's been doing has been working with the survey company. And so we've had a meeting with the person who's the first draft of the survey, uh, and we had a number of concerns and so now they're going back and redrafting and so we're continuing to work on that and we haven't quite figured out, uh, when that's going to be coming to you, but because of the, the timing, because the FEIR for the Baylands should probably be coming out, what, sometimes now the middle of May, I think, is the last I heard. Um, and then we want to make sure that we're ready to, you know, to give the survey, um, a month or two after that, um, assuming that the other information that we're hoping to get out there to the public is made available, uh, so that this is all done and, and analyzed before the Planning Commission starts, which will probably be sometime in, uh, in the fall. So we're trying to, to make, get everything, uh, to, you know, to meet all those timing objectives and we'll see whether we make it or not, but we're working at it. Okay.
Any other subcommittee reports? Written communications, I don't, uh, other than the topics that were addressed in, at their appropriate time, I have nothing. And then, uh, we have a report on the receipt of applications for the Planning Commission vacancy. And we seem to have lost our city clerk.
I lost my city clerk, but I believe she already get, handed those out to you.
Right.
Uh, seven applications.
Eight.
Whatever.
Eight.
Okay, eight, fine. Um, so tonight, uh, in setting the agenda with the mayor, it was just a, a function of you're getting the applications and then we'll put it on the May 7th agenda in terms of what you want to do with that.
And, thank you. And then we have the, um, Sustainability Framework Workshop on June 15th or 16th?
This is a follow-up to what I just talked about. You want to?
Yeah, so the, uh, the next kind of step in the process is to, um, have a, a workshop that the city council would, um, would hold. Um, and, um, we're looking at one of those two Monday, or Monday or Tuesday, the 15th or the 16th. You're, um, going to be having budget meetings the week before, so the, the, the schedule gets kind of tight. So that's why it was kind of crunched down to just those two.
I'm not available on the 16th, on the Tuesday.
Okay. Makes it tough because I'm not on the 15th, so. I am on the 16th. That the only two days?
Well, we can't do it the week before. Ray, you may be able to help me. I think we were concerned about the following week for some reason. Oh, um, I think it was Cliff's departure.
I think he's here through the third week anyway. So what are we, or is this the third week?
That is the third week.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
He leaves the, the fourth week.
Yeah, he was going to be gone on the 22nd. That was the.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Let's just do it 15th. Uh, I'll see what I can do, rearrange.
So this is.
I'd prefer the 16th, but, um, how much, uh, uh.
The 15th or the 16th?
15th. Terry can't be available on the 16th. I'm not available on the 15th, but let me rearrange it. I don't really want to do a Monday meeting, period, anyway, but I'm usually out of towns a lot of times, so that's my problem.
Well, I mean, if that's the only day, I mean, I, I. I just have, um, other commitments, but if that's the only date that works. I did not bring my calendar with me tonight, so.
Or did I?
My iPad is on the charger.
And this would be an evening meeting at 7:30?
Yes.
And what's our, what's our, um, expectation of a timeframe for that meeting?
Well, I mean, it's a fairly substantive document. The consultant will be here, um, I'm sure, make a presentation. It really kind of comes down to how much questions and answers are there and I certainly think we'll be inviting our various council subcommittees to, our, um, committees of the ci, the city councils, such as Open Space and Planning Commission and Parks and Rec to come that night if they would like to. So I, I would think it could easily be a three-hour meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Late night meeting. So do you want to arm wrestle me for Monday or Tuesday?
I don't think I could beat you. We'll do Monday.
Sure?
Yeah. Let me just, uh, yeah, let me. Okay. I'll figure it out. Let's, let's just say Monday and then move on.
Okay. And then we have the City Selection Committee appointments for April 24th meeting. And there's two seats we need to consider. Um, and then also need to, um, confirm, Sherry, have you gotten any, um, confirmation from Cliff or the other members on who's attending that meeting?
The City Selection Committee, no.
Okay. Are any of us interested in attending that meeting?
Somebody has to.
Well, we, I know we have to. I'm just asking if anyone else besides me is interested in attending. I know Cliff has been going to a lot of them, but, um, I, I can, I will go if, if I need to, if no one else is interested.
Yeah, you know, I was going to go to the last one and I completely forgot about it. I mean, I, I got busy, you know, and that's, that was the problem, you know, and, and so I, yeah, I don't.
This one at least is closer, which makes it nicer for me.
Right.
That it's not down in Menlo Park or someplace in.
This one's in Mill.
Five o'clock on a Friday.
I'll double check with, uh, Cliff and just.
If Cliff is not wanting to attend, then I will attend otherwise. And if, if he's going to attend, I assume we can get, uh, authorization from the council to, for the proxy.
Right.
But otherwise I will attend. And then, um, for the, their item three, which is, uh, councilman for the seat on LAFCO, Councilmember Ray Mueller of Menlo Park is seeking appointment and Councilmember Peter Mason for the town of Woodside. And, um, do we have any, uh, personal preferences on that?
Yeah, well, I, believe it or not, I've actually met both of them.
Yeah.
They both come pretty regularly to Council of Cities, at least the ones at places, times that I've attended.
I've spoken with both.
Yeah. Personally, I'd prefer Ray Mueller, but that's just my personal preference.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay, that was easy.
And then on the, um, San Mateo County Transportation Authority, we have Vice Mayor Elizabeth Lewis from the City of Atherton and Vice Mayor Cameron Johnson, City of San Carlos, uh, seeking appointment. Do we have any?
I, I know Elizabeth. I've known Elizabeth for a while and, and. Yeah, me too. She's very good, yeah. She is good.
I have met both of them and I've, you know, spoken to both. And I have heard from other people who regularly take public transit who are, who have, um, encouraged me to, um, propose Cameron Johnson because they feel that San Carlos, where he's, um, on the council, has done a good job at creating, uh, grade separation for their Caltrans station and that he would be a good person who would really promote , uh, use of public transit. But, you know, I understand Elizabeth has a lot of experience. Cameron, on the other hand, um, is a little newer, um, yet it would be a good opportunity for him to get involved at a regional level.
I would be more inclined with Cameron Johnson. I did talk to him today. I think he has a, a good idea of, of trying to get a, a corridor going that's, that has a good idea rather than more specific, um, individual cities projects. And I like that theory of trying to look at the bigger, longer route. That would be my.
Two-two split. Your call. Yeah, you're the mayor.
Okay, well, then I'm going to say Cameron Johnson.
Okay.
There you go.
And with that brings us to oral communications, number two. Is there a member of the public who would like to speak on something that has not been on our agenda? No? Thank you. And, um, on the receipt of, I did want to mention that, um, on the applications for Planning Commission, I'm really happy that we got so many people who are interested in the position of Planning Commissioner and that it, it shows a great community involvement that we have eight people who were willing to, um, put themselves on the line to be considered and I'm very appreciative of that. And with that, I would ask for a motion to.
So we. Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.